Good evening. My name is Keith Romano. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is September 23rd. I'll take a roll call of members of the commission staff. Myself, Keith Romano, Lois Spence.
Here.
Who's our vice chair and secretary. Jim Stewart. Who's our last surveyor and engineer in the state of Connecticut. Ingris. There. Ross Mastaraco. BJ Hall.
Here.
Denise Halsted, who is our.
Here.
Donna Szysinski is our office manager.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud, our recording secretary. Is that right?
Yep, she's here.
Okay. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses in the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure: In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will ask applicant questions. Due to remote meeting status, I'd like to ask applicants to keep presenting as soon as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other. The meetings will then be open for public comment. I'll ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments, pros and cons, or general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, questions are direct and at a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered and is evident from testimony during the response. Please keep all comments, pros and cons, specific to inland wetlands related matters. Third, applications that do not involve public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there is no public comments allowed. Meeting files are published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the meeting?
Oh, I don't know what that was. Yes, there are changes to the agenda. There is the addition of an application hearing determination. It is IWC-2020-05. The address is 195 201 and 211 Main Street. And the application is a proposed three-story senior housing, including paint entrance, parking patio, grading and landscaping. The applicant is mutual housing associate of Southwestern Connecticut, doing business as Connecticut Housing Partner. And then there is, that's under item D, under item E. Other, there will be a discussion for 588 Pepper Street. It's a modification of an existing plan. And it's to determine the type of application the commission would like to see. And just as a side note, we did receive an email from the applicant for 556 Pepper Street. They have asked, they are delaying their submission, so they do not have anything new for tonight's public hearing. So the commission can do what they want with that.
That's it, so we're ready to go. This, in this, at this point in the meeting, it's our general public participation. Anybody in the public tonight have any comments they want to make to the commission? In a, in a general nature of anything in particular also. The same time, we do want to acknowledge, based on the last meeting, that had a login issue. Wasn't able to comment on anything that was, that was discussed then. We'd like you to offer your input now. That's. I'd like anybody.
Well, I could say something. I'm Margaret Minor. I'm affiliated with Rivers Alliance. And I'm interested in the quarry situation. And for some 20 years, we've responded to various issues involving quarries and earth materials. And deep has been supposed to have some regulations. So I just wanted to thank you for giving so much attention to, to one of these quarries that are around the state, but this is a big one. So just thank you and, and I'm here hoping to learn something.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before we move on? All right, let's, the next thing we're going to do, as previous meetings have been run. We're going to save the end of the meeting for 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence. So we're going to, we're going to skip right over that for now, back to it. And give the, a lot of the remaining time for tonight's meeting to that application. We are subdivision report recommendation. On regular meetings, none of the hearings. IWC 2020-03R deferred to the end of the meeting. IWC 2028-04556 Pepper Street, proposed gravel parking area for commercial vehicles. This is the applicant. The, so then I assume the next meeting?
Yes.
We just pass on by this, or do we have to make an act?
Oh, no, I mean, we can just table it till the next meeting. They've corresponded with us. I've made the, the email a exhibit in the application. And you all have been notified for it, so I don't think we need to do anything else other than table that till next meeting.
All right, all in favor of tabling IWC 2020-04 for the next meeting? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, enforcement, NOV discussion. IWV-2020-06588 Monroe Turnpike, unpermitted activity within upland review area.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to put my, put it up and Denise, I will give you control.
Okay, I don't know whether the property owner is caller two or not.
Who, who should be on for this?
Dave.
Is there someone here?
That's what I'm trying to find out because he was supposed to call in. Caller two's not talking, as far as I know. Okay, I'll, I'll handle it, I guess.
Okay.
While you're putting it up, this was the NOV that's over on Monroe Turnpike. This was the one we had talked about, I guess, the last meeting or the day before, and we said, go ahead and do the, send out the NOV. Where there was landscaping equipment, debris, and brush. That was all in the upland review area. The property owner has contacted me, has cleaned it up. I went out there. Photos are on the jump drive that we're trying to bring up. They did, yep, no problem. They did, they, you know, just in case they want to see, they did do a, you know, cleanup. The dumpster is still there, but that's going to be going and the dumpster's in the parking lot. It's not, you know, it's not the, the grass area. So I did tell the property owner it would still be good for him just to be on the phone call. Just in case you had any questions for him.
And he's not? You don't believe he is?
Well, caller two's the only person I could think of and they're not talking. Otherwise, I do not see them.
Caller two identified himself, so we can just put this.
Okay, so this was the. Okay, can I?
Yeah, you should have control.
Okay, so this was the original. Bear with me as my mouse is playing. This was the original. Violation. Here's the building. It was back in this area in the upland review. That they had landscape equipment and debris and lawn outline. A little further down, these were some of the previous pictures. As you could see, there's tires from the landscape equipment. I don't know why this is taken, it's moving very slowly. I don't know if it's my computer. You know, there were the tires and all, all this debris has since been cleaned. We do have another, the photo document, Donna, which shows what it looks like today. Right there.
Sorry, I don't think my computer likes all these things.
I know, it's, technology's great, but loading photos lately has been very slow. So this is what it was, I, I was out there the other morning, as you could see, all, this is all that area that had the. Lawn mowers, the tires, there had been the propane tanks in front and a lot of debris that was left behind. It's since been cleaned up. Don't know whether the commission, if this is acceptable to the commission, but you know, that was part of the thing. Yeah, we wanted them to get all that out of the upland review area. Some more photos, as you could see.
I don't know if you can hear me. This is David Steves.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, I couldn't get online, but I got the phone thing to work.
Okay, good.
I know you surprised him.
So I was just letting the commission know, I just showed them the photos of the cleanup.
Yep.
So I don't know if they have any questions or comments. But you can have the property owner on line now too, so.
Let's, we'll do our normal, just run through the commissioners, ask if they have any questions. Want to do that? Or comments? Questions or comments about this violation?
I would like, I would like to thank the property owner for being so responsive and to, and for reacting so quickly. For which all our violators were so, so. Thank you. That's my only comment.
Thank you.
I'm going to just go down the list again. Jim, do you have any comments or questions or homeowner?
I as well think it's great that they, they cleaned it up quickly and I, I recommend we just close immediately.
All right, Ross, any comments?
It looks good. Looks like he did everything we asked him to do and good to go.
EJ? Try it in.
Looks fine. I think closing and out's a good idea.
And Clark, your last, anything?
Nothing, same, same as everybody else.
All right. Someone like to make a motion to accept this remediation? Close this out?
I'm a.
Uh, who's that? I didn't. Did you get that, Donna?
Lois made a motion to close the violation out. And I didn't get a second.
Second.
BJ's the second, okay. Someone's got a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I'm hearing it.
Jim Stewart. That's what my thing is saying. Okay, all in favor of accepting this remediation?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
IWV 2020-0869 Enterprise Drive, unpermitted activity within upland.
Okay, now I believe. So Alan Shepard before, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Alan is going to be talking about this on behalf of the present property owner or the future property owner?
The contract purchaser.
Okay.
I, I did talk to the president, president owner also. So, I don't know, you want to go first Denise, or you want me to respond?
You could go ahead and respond. Well, here, Donna got the, she has it up for me, just to kind of refresh everyone's memory. This is property in the industrial park. I'm slowly going through all the properties up there. And they had some unapproved, unpermitted clearing in the upland review area. They all had committed unapproved use of land within the upland review area and also debris in the upland review area. And I'm trying to get the map up for you. Okay, just a little more. Oops. There we go. Is that good? Can everyone see that?
This, good, okay. This is the site on the end of Enterprise Drive. An application was submitted before, some years ago. For Clara's Construction Company. The, it was approved. The owner started to do some of the work and actually took out a permit. He said he posted a bond. Obviously, the market turned on him and he extinguished the construction. Did, he, he represented to me that he did work with the town. And they actually released all or part of his bond for the work that was done at that time for the clearing. Now, since then, as you can see on the, the photos, there's some trailers that are on the property or stored on the property. There's also an activity that's on the Newtown side, which is. A large horse manure pile that's, that's permitted. Up to the north, I guess you'd say. So, so there is some activity with that, but it's on the Newtown side. So the clearing, he thought he was good with the clearing. He believed he was good with the clearing. The. We are currently, well, the good news about this maybe is that we're currently coming in with an application for site plan approval for our stone. Company LLC. And that should be in, like, we asked a workshop meeting with the town. And we should have the wetland application in next week. Or shortly thereafter. So we are, so some of these issues will be resolved with the application. Because we're, we'd like to get permission to build two buildings on the site. Parking and everything. Our proposal does not go any farther than their original approved disturbance line. So, and we have smaller buildings that were proposed originally. So alls I would ask the board is maybe to table this till our application comes in. So we can handle them simultaneously.
Okay. Go down the line again. I'll start with Lois. Do you have any questions or comments about this violation?
No, I'm just interested to see what they bring in as, as an application. I hope that there's some mediation or remediation in place also. That's it.
Great, Ross?
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I'm good with postponing this until, until the next meeting or 30 days, whatever they need.
BJ?
I think as long as we flag it for follow-up and check it then, I think we're good.
And finally, Clark?
Yeah, I'm good as soon as we can get an application in, hopefully by next meeting.
Okay. I think we all kind of agree. Let's, someone make a motion on this?
I'm going to move that we postpone this issue for 30 days.
Got a motion for Commissioner Stewart to postpone for 30 days. I second it.
I'll second it.
I give it to Commissioner Spence. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any extensions? I think the motion passes unanimously. Next is IWV.
Thank you.
2020-09176 Main Street, unpermitted storage of vehicles and such within upland review area.
Okay, I know we're going to get that up on the screen and I did speak to the property owner and I believe they are, either they are on or somebody representing them is supposed to be on?
Yes, I'm, I'm half owner as well. I'm her Jose Pablo Casadas' wife.
Okay. We're just going to get, get the thing up so the commissioner members could refresh their memory.
Sorry, trying.
It's all right.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, this is the liquor store now. My, these, the people that own it now are different than ones that had owned it in the past when there had been. An old violation that we had since closed out. We found this violation because we were looking, doing a CO for a property nearby. And when zoning was back there, looking at the property adjacent. It was noted that there was trucks parked in this back area. Whoops. Hold on. So the property is like an L shape. So this is a liquor store and there's all this property that's back here. And this is area that's in the upland review area that is being utilized for storage of vehicles. And you could see it right there in that photo. So if the property owner wants to take the floor. Where did you go?
Oh, yes, so we removed every, all the vehicles that were parked there immediately once we were advised. We honestly didn't have any idea because the old owner did that for 15 years.
Yep.
So it was basically a recommendation from, from him and there was a boat that has been there more than 10 years as well. So as I said, the vehicles, the vehicles were immediately removed. We just had some issues with the boat because we don't know what to do with it. I guess just contract someone to get rid of it. But that will be the only piece that we still kind of don't sure what to do. Garbage, I'm sure.
Probably at this point it is.
Yeah.
Maybe advertise free boat and someone will come in and pull it out.
Yeah, that's, that's what we are thinking to do is just.
Yeah, getting rid of a boat is not an easy job.
I know.
Any commissioners have any questions for this, on this violation to the property owner? Starting with Lois?
I was just reading the background paperwork that came with this violation information. And there was a letter dated 2018 that they recommended that inland wetland markers be put up to help defer, not defer, but to help avoid this happening in the future. I'm thinking that that might be a good idea so that everybody knows that it's a regulated area. I'm not sure how everybody else feels about that. But I think that putting out, putting the boat out on the road and saying free boat, if it has a motor on it especially, it's likely to disappear very quickly. That's, that's my only comment. I'm glad, thank you once again for being so responsive. And we'll hope that there, we're not going to have to have any future business like this anymore.
Thank you, Commissioner Spence. Anything from Jim Stewart?
Denise, is the area the vehicles parked, you know, is it, is it vegetated enough so that if it's just left alone, it'll just grow back?
Um, it might grow back. I mean, several years back, the, the, the old violation had tree, like a tree service back there where they had cut down trees. You know, the trees were brought there from another site and they were basically logging them and doing different things. That's a good picture right there, Donna. That's great. Oops. There's, where the sea of bizarre. This area is kind of like a gravelled area. There's a lot of trees and vegetation around it. It is kind of part of a flood zone as well, so I'm not sure how well the vegetation ever really gets to that area because it is kind of wet. Why on the past violation, we kept trying to get those three markers that Lois mentioned that I had asked for. If we could just keep vehicles from being back there, that would be great. But I know to the property owners, it's the, you know, a large piece of land that's not utilized.
So, so would you recommend that there be any restoration at all, or just, just get the boat out of there and we're done?
I think we just get the boat out to be done. I, I think over in time, because the areas around it are all overgrown, I think that nature will reclaim it on its own.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, Ross, anything from you?
I'm good with that.
Hey, Clark?
Yeah, I agree with that. Especially with Lois, we should, they should put up some markers there so nobody else parks back there.
And, thank you. And BJ?
I'm good.
All right, my only comment on this one is that I think we should set a time limit on, on the boat. And just because I think it's fair, give her, you know, give them a little bit of time to, to try to, you know, get a very, like, hopefully give it away or do it and own it, whatever the case may be. But I think we should have, I think we should have at the next meeting their plan of what they're going to do. If, if the, if the easy route doesn't pan out for them. So there's got to be a way, there's got to be a way to dispose of, of anything. All garbage is disposable or recyclable. There's a way to dispose of anything, including skyscrapers. So I don't see how a boat. You know, can't be disposed of. So let's come back to us with a plan of how they're going to deal with the boat if they can't give it away.
Isn't that the junkers or something? You just snap your fingers and they come?
Just point.
Point and it goes.
So would someone like to make a motion on this violation?
I will make a motion that. That we give the property owner 30 days to get the boat gone. And that the, that have inland wetlands installed as per the. and that the, um, that have inland markers installed as per the, um, diagram, I'll call it, that was included with our packet. Which, what shows the placement of three markers within the upland review area that determines that it's regulated area.
Second. We got a motion from Commissioner Spence, a second by Commissioner Gingras, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to, um, I don't know if we had, did we have a number for 588 Pepper Street?
We have, we have something else before we get to that.
You?
Yeah, you'd be, you'd be going to D right now, which was the, um...
588 Pepper Street, that wasn't on there. Uh, notice of Ily.
58, 588 Pepper Street is under E, other.
Oh, yeah, I had it in the wrong spot, okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's alright, that's why I was like, wait a sec.
Yep. At least I wrote it down. Alright, so we're on, I'm sorry?
You're on D, the application hearing determination, which is IWC 2020-05.
Yes.
And it's 195, 201 and 211 Main Street and it's for proposed three-story senior housing. And you guys, I dropped the, that was part of your packet and tonight is just an acceptance and a determination of the type of review, whether you want it to be a regular review or a public hearing.
I move that we bring it to public hearing in that it is a large project that will be very visible and the public might be very interested in knowing about. In the public's interest.
Okay, and a motion from Commissioner Spence, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by BJ Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, uh, public hearing for that address, 2020-05. Alright, now to other. Uh, we have 71 Turkey Route, horse paddock area update, um, should I?
No, you don't have to, it's, it's just really, it's just really updating the commission, um, this was a, um, something that had come up to the commission, I don't know, maybe a month, two months ago, where, um, the property owner had asked and, and I pulled out the fact that there is a master plan for, um, the paddock, uh, maintenance and we had discussed, they put, they had up, raised one of the paddock areas up, they had scraped all the topsoil off, put some stone down and then covered it back up with the topsoil. I went out, I looked at it, it looks great, it's, you know, the drainage is, is working perfectly, just wanted to update the commission because they like to be, be able to maybe go and start doing the other paddocks and I just said I would update the commission and let them know what was going on.
Alright. Thank you.
Denise, how long has it been since it's been finished?
Um, probably a good month or so, I mean, the grass was, it was, the grass was, uh, nice and long and, uh, wasn't long after a storm, if I'm not mistaken, and everything looked really good. There was, you know, there's one little area that was a little bit damp, which is in another paddock, but that we knew was always damp. So, you know, we did, they did the middle one and it's, it's working very, very well.
Just be interesting to see what would be, what would happen if we had a wet summer instead of a dry summer, but...
Well, this is true. We can't control our weather, right?
No, that's the truth. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, any other comments or questions from the question? Nope, okay, let's move over to, uh, 588 Pepper Street.
Okay, if, um, Donna could bring the plan up, so, the history of this, this is an existing building on Pepper Street. Um, it's in, currently it's in front of the, uh, planning and zoning and originally, a question had been asked at one point, you know, do we need wetlands? This is when I was working remotely, um, the wetlands that are on other properties were approximate based on our GIS. We have since found some better mapping, so I told them that, you know, we may have some, there may be a inland wetlands permit required. So, provided that the information to the applicant and they did a revision in one area where there would have been new, um, pavement. My mouse, so, this wetlands is now properly mapped based on some information we have from a previous plan on this property. So the upland review area puts us right through here, the previous plan, the parking area kind of went into that area. They have since revised the plan so that they could be outside of that area since this is undeveloped land. So they, they, they modify the drawing there, we've got a wetland across the street on Pepper Street. On the opposite side, the upland review area brings us right around this area and there is some work being done. Now, this is an existing grass strip and I do have an aerial so you could see and, you know, this is existing driveway, they're modifying, they're putting a new pipe in and outlet, it's in the upland review area. The question is, can this be done as an agent approval, since it's already disturbed property? It's not something brand new.
I think it could easily be an agent approval, personally.
And I didn't want to make, you know, I, I told them that it had to be the commission to make that determination and I would bring it to them.
Denise, can you, can you, um, enlarge that and just maybe just?
Yep.
What's gonna be done?
Hold on.
Seeing how we don't have copies of this plan or... Just walk us through what's, what's happening here.
Okay, I'm gonna show you in the front because that's where, that's the work that's... And I do, like I said, I do have the aerial, so if there's any questions, I could show you existing conditions. Is that big enough for everyone to, to pretty much see?
Yes, I think so.
So, this is the existing driveway. As they're enlarging, they're enlarging the parking in the back, so now we're gonna have a detention basin in this area and the overflow pipe is gonna cross through the driveway and it's gonna exit out here to the existing system. And, this line right here is the upland review area, so you could see, there's a little bit of the basin in this area and the outlet, that's in the 100 foot.
Yeah.
As I said, they modified the rear portion so that they were outside of the 100 foot, so that's really no, you know, back here, that's really, has no, nothing anymore to the wetlands commission.
I'd go with agent approval.
Uh, that was, was that you, Clark?
Uh, this is BJ.
BJ, you wanna just make a motion on that?
I make a motion, we move that to, uh, agent approval.
A second? Second by Commissioner Gingras, a motion by Commissioner Hall, second by Commissioner Gingras, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are... Okay, uh, the regulation completed hearings, we have none. Are we to the construction report? None. And time extension? None. Go over that with us Denise?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, what keep?
Yeah, um, the, uh, the agent approvals report.
Um, okay, we have no new agent approvals at this time. Permitted uses as of right, we have the, um, standard IPU 2018-01 for Department of Public Works that includes any road repair, replacement and or general maintenance.
Enforcement deliberations, the location of your mediation missions, which are none, completed items, agenda, none. Administrative review enforcement issues, IWV 2020-10, 172 enterprise material and structures within upland review area.
Like I said, I'm systematically doing the industrial park.
That's the one we already talked about.
No, this is one next door to the one we talked about.
I'm sorry, I thought...
169 was the other one, this is 172. So this is a brand new one you haven't seen. And wanted to discuss, I mean, I've got a report whether we wanna bring this to an NOV like we had, did the past ones.
Okay, so let's see.
That one's not under the NOVs Donna, it's by itself, under the main part of the, uh...
Yep, just found it.
Okay. Okay. So, 172, um... So once again, this is all, this is all coming to light with everything going on, there's a lot of title searches going on within the industrial park and this is another piece of property that had a passed approval that has since lapsed and they're using it as a construction yard and there's unapproved clearing within the 100 foot upland review area, unapproved storage material within the 100 foot upland review area, unapproved equipment within the 100 foot upland review area and unapproved structures all within the 100 foot upland review area. And if I could get to the drawing, you could see what I am talking about, okay. So when they had an approval, um, some of these had walls that were part of the approval, but these are all piles of construction, you know, debris, they've got an area here which, um, and I don't know if I can make this bigger. Oh, I can't make it bigger, sorry, um... So they, you know, they blocked this out, they're storing, uh, quick, um, construction, I don't know, things that they need for construction in this area, they've got their piles of material. But all this is in the upland review area. And if I could get it to go over a little bit more. So we have that whole area there that's disturbed the upland reviewer and then everything back here.
Make a motion that we send a notice of violation to them. We have a, a motion from Chris, Commissioner Gingras to send a notice of violation, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Oh.
I'm sorry, a commi, second by Commissioner Hall, all in favors?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Status updates, doesn't look like there's anything here. Uh, I guess we go to the minutes now? What's on page three, um...
Those are just placeholders keep?
I got you, alright, got it. Alright, so let's do the minutes of August 26, 2020.
Move to approve with some, uh, changes?
We have a motion to approve the minutes with some changes. Second? Or do we wait, now we wait till we hear the changes?
Do you want to hear the changes?
Yeah.
Okay, um, hmm, there's quite a few of them actually, on page two of seven, on the, the fourth paragraph, um, after Mr. Sullivan's findings, um, Mr. Sullivan said they have engaged a hydrogeologist to assist them, um... And also discussion ensued as to whether or not the excavated hole is a water course and that, uh, Mr. Sullivan feels that as a water course being filled, mitigation, mitigation elsewhere would be appropriate. Um, two paragraphs down from there, after Mr. Logan asked if Mr. Sullivan thinks he'll hydrologist, uh, it's, it's just a typo, she has re, re-hydrologist. Um, the following paragraph is Evan Glass from Alka Environmental, we are adding from Alka Environmental. Um, let's see, I can send this to you Donna.
Thank you.
Comprehensive, um... Next page, three of seven. Paragraph starts with Mrs. Stollenberg asked the commission again, dot, 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 um, after the word excavated, if he, he thinks, oh, Commissioner Stewart advised that he thinks an evaluation by a soil scientist of the excavated area is considered a wetland. That's not right either. Anyway, there's a order too missing in there, I'll work on that. And motion to obtain, the next line is a motion to obtain a third-party review of the excavated area by a soil scientist, with the fees of which to be paid for by the applicant. After that motion, Attorney Green quoted, um, 7.6 point H and 7.5 K in our, in the IWC regs, having the commission's ability to hire on board. Incoming bill... Lois, are you still on page three? I am, yes, this is all before the motion is, or just after the motion. Is, I'm sorry, it goes right after the, the vote tally.
Okay.
Is the attorney green, um... And I believe that was it.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion from Commissioner Spence to approve the minutes with the, uh, changes, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gingras.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, uh, minute for September 9th, 2020.
Jim, we're still getting a lot of feedback from your, uh, phone, I believe. I don't know if a different place would work or not.
Jim?
From me?
Yeah, it's coming from you.
I don't have it on, I...
There any?
Really?
Yeah, as soon as you unmute Jim, it gets loud.
It gets louder when I go on mute?
When you go off mute, it, it picks up something. It's weird.
I can sign back in if you want.
Well now it's okay, I don't know what you did, but...
I blocked my mouse. There you go.
Not as quiet as a mouse.
Might have been your fan.
Okay, anyway, so we're at September 9th minute?
Move to approve as drafted.
A motion from Commissioner Spence to approve minutes as drafted, we have a second, looks like Commissioner Hall is dumping right in there with, with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, minutes are accepted. Um, moving over to Regulation Amendment Committee, is there anything? No.
No.
Outreach Committee, anything? No. Alright, um, now we're going to go back to, um, IWC 2020-03R, um, to discuss, uh, 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence Site Development and Restoration. Tonight, we are joined by, uh, Chris Sullivan again, thank you, and we're gonna start there because I think we have new questions from the commissioners um, and then, um, some, possibly some comments from, um, the, uh, intervene, or questions from the interviewer, I think we have done that yet, have we? Um, anyone wanna come?
I, I think we have had question, sorry Mr. Chairman, it's Attorney Finn on behalf of applicant, I, I think there were a lot of questions posed to Mr. Sullivan when he first spoke by the intervener and actually it's the... actually, it's the applicant who hasn't had much of a chance to, to ask some questions of Mr. Sullivan. So I would ask at some opportunity.
There should be some dialogue between Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Kenny, right? Is that right?
Uh, I, I know, I don't think there was any direct dialogue between Mr. Kenny and Mr. Sullivan. I know that Mr. Soli submitted a lot of information recently that was in response to a lot of the questions and a lot of requests for information set forth in Mr. Sullivan's original report. And I think that was very extensive. Now granted, I think that only was sent to Mr. Sullivan within the last day or so, so I'd be surprised if he had an opportunity to really review it thoroughly. We were thinking that perhaps Mr. Soli would start off tonight's meeting with sort of summarizing that new information. And then perhaps both the applicant and the commission could pose a few questions to Mr. Sullivan and then turn it over to the intervener.
I think we'll, we're going to just do that in just a slightly different order. I'd like to have, like to introduce Chris Sullivan and have him listen on anything that, that he may have to say, and then also let the commissioners ask some questions. And then we'll get right to the applicant.
Chairman.
Uh, Chris?
I've got an objection first.
Yes?
All right. We just got this packet yesterday evening. I know there's a lot of information in it, but I haven't had a chance to even digest half of this. And we're, I'm just a little, I'm a little uptight that we got this handed to us on the 22nd. So I mean, that's, I just want to make one objection about this because this packet, I know it took a long time to put together, but you know, you cannot read 150 pages of this and understand everything about it.
I understand.
Want to make that objection right up front.
Let me, uh, let me just say, hold on, Kevin. I do have a question though for staff. You have to keep track of the, the clock here. So, because there's a lot of information that still needs to be digested, as Commissioner Gingrich just said, and there is a time limit here. So we have to be able to, you know, act accordingly. And, 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 and I don't know what, what happens if, if the clock does run out, but um, there's, uh, so we need to see where, you know, how many, how much time we have left here. I mean, we gotta be getting to somewhere significant in the time lapse. Maybe we have any comments on that?
Okay, so I did the calculations as far as the statutory timeframe for review, including the 90-day governor's order extension and then the 65 days that the applicant would normally have. So with the 90-days governor, governor order extension, the deadline would be October 27th, 2020, and then plus the 65 days of regular extension time that a normal application has would bring the timeframe to absolutely the end date would be December 31st, 2020. So there's no more extension time. Yeah, that's correct.
Our last meeting, you said December 31, 31st?
Correct.
So the last day of the year. So, this is our last meeting in December. Do we have one? We obviously don't have one in December, right?
No, we do have one, one in December, yes.
Okay, what date is that?
I have it in December 9.
December 9.
That's what I have, 9.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think there may be a, a little bit of a miscalculation. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this application was filed on honor about June 24th of 2020. And Kevin, maybe you can confirm that. If you were to add 90 days to that, I believe that brings you to, to September 24th, 25th, 23rd, not to October.
It was submitted on May 26th.
Calculated. You normally have 35 days to close a public hearing. So it's 90 plus the 35.
Right, plus an additional 65 if you, if you want to.
Correct. 65 that the applicant would be asked to consent to.
Okay.
So I think that's how you got to, October 27th, the 90 plus the 35.
Okay.
So we have to be conscious of the fact that it is highly likely that the commission is going to have to ask the applicant for an extension, that the outside date to do that is October 27th.
And, and just for clarity, for clarification purposes too, the application was submitted on May 26th and received by the Wetlands Commission on their meeting, regular meeting on May 27th.
Um, Kevin, it was date stamped on May 27th that we received it in inland wetlands. Your, your thing is your letter is dated May 26th.
Oh, you know what it was? I think this was still when we were doing the Dropbox. So it ended up getting stamped the following day, so. Um, but yes, absolutely. Sorry.
So is December 9th still the last meeting that we're going to be able to to, to talk on this before the deadline?
No, that is your deadline. The decision needs to be made before December 31st. So unless you hold a special meeting
to make a decision. To be closed by then, and then there wouldn't be any further extensions.
A public, a public hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're, you're absolutely right, Barbara. I apologize. Yeah, that's correct.
I, I, I just, I just want to make sure we're counting from the right time period, Donna. You, so you started counting from the date that the public hearing opened, right? Not when the application was received.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. All right.
Sounds like we're we're all on the same page and we've got it straight.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been double checking this a lot.
Okay. Our timeframe is. Let us, uh, again, introduce Chris Sullivan and let him speak or receive any comments from the commissioners because since, since he, um, we had the sidewalk, I think, between uh, his last appearance on the, on the, um, on the meeting, right? So Chris, uh, I didn't.
All right, can you guys, yeah, can you everybody hear me all right? Um, just to make sure the mic's on. So I apologize for missing the, the September 9th meeting. I have a standing obligation on the second Wednesdays that I can't skip, so I'm glad that I was able to make it back tonight. Really, the, the, there's two items that I was prepared to speak about a little bit more tonight, and that was the Corey Pond being a water course, which had came up at the, my first meeting that I attended. And I know that Mr. Kenny wasn't able to be there. So that, that was the one item I was here to talk about more. And then the second item was the value of the commission hiring a third-party independent consultant to review data and collect samples, et cetera. So I, I have some things written down that I would just, I can speak to those, those two items first and then certainly take questions from the commission. And it sounds like the applicant has more questions as well. So as I had mentioned in, in our report from the district, I, I do believe that the pond can be considered a water course. And I, I just want to ask maybe a point of clarification. I, I did read through the minutes from the September 9th meeting. And on page four, I thought I read that Attorney Finn advised that the applicant does not plan to contest the fact. And if, that's actually true. Maybe we don't need to spend time debating the fact that the Corey Pond is a water course. So maybe I can just start with that point to save a little bit of time and get a clarification on that point from the minute.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Sullivan, I, I can confirm that we are not going to contest that that's that could be technically deemed a water course. I know Mr. Kenny has some remarks about, about that and its impact on our application and and an explanation as to why we don't think it, it really has significant weight with regard to this application. And Mr. Kenny will, will provide those remarks in a little while, unless Mr. Sullivan would like to hear from, hear those now, in which case we, we could take that up now, but I don't want to interrupt your procedure here, Mr. Chairman Romano, unless I have your consent to do so.
Let's let Chris touch on his two points that he, that he, that he's talked about, and then we'll see where it takes us from there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll, I'll pass over on the water course. He's for now, just for time saving, but I'd, I'd reserve the point to make a couple of comments on what Mr. Kenny has to say about it later. But I do, I mean, the summary is I, I believe that by your, by your reg, that it would be considered a water course. And I think that that's a decision that the commission has to decide where you're voting on this application. So I think that you're totally within your rights and abilities to consider it a water course per the regs, which are also the state statutes. The, the second piece that I, I did want to comment on is the value of the commission hiring its own independent consultant. And I think that, I don't know the commissioners' names very well nor faces, but I know one of the commissioners was concerned about the amount of data that came in. I think that's part of the reason having another consultant onboard for the commission is helpful to help go through some of that information. And a consultant that would be hired for the commission to be on retainer by the commission would work for you to review the documents, data collection plans, any resultant data sets that are generated by the applicant's hydrogeologist. I think there's a lot of value there to help go through that information. I will reiterate that I am not a hydrogeologist nor an engineer, so I can't provide expert opinions on that sort of information. I also believe that commission's hiring consultants is a very common practice, especially when looking at a very complex or large-scale and technically difficult site, which I think this application meets all of those criteria. And I, I do want to, I didn't have a point, a chance to look at the materials that Mr. Soli has submitted, nor the other files on SharePoint recently. There is quite a bit on there. But I did note that in the scope of work for the hydrogeologist, there's language about scheduling time to meet with the commission and any experts that may be retained by the commission. So even that language in the scope of work acknowledges that the commission is able to hire consultants to work on this project for them. So I think that almost everybody here can agree that the commission is within their rights and abilities to hire a consultant to help them with this project. I will also say that without a consultant, specifically a hydrogeologist, any results and conclusions from the applicant's team of experts on this will be on the record for the project with no other interpretation of the results from other experts, and they would be considered as the only thing that the commission could make a decision on moving forward. And that's also my understanding that there are no hydrogeologists that are members of the commission. So to have any sort of second opinion on the record that it would be valuable to have a hydrogeologist on retainer to review this information. And, and having that sort of expert input is really the foundation for your, the commission's decision for any legal decision. It's going to make the decisions that the commission makes stronger for the site application. And I believe that it's doing your due diligence in protecting the town legally from any decisions you make, but also environmentally for the site. And to that front, I've already given a list of potential consultants to the town that I obtained from state DAS contracts from consulting firms and organizations that are able to do this work. It's my understanding that some of these firms would be able to, to do the work within four or five weeks, so it would still be within that deadline that was discussed earlier. And I think it would be important to really improve in the understanding and value of the site and what's happening there. And I, I'd also like to add that I think having those wells and soil boring result, results before more work is being done is important. So there's a baseline of what is at the site already before the project moves forward. And before, so you have something to compare to any potential impacts in the future. Otherwise, there's, there's nothing to start with. So you know, this is projected to be a very long-term project. And so having that baseline of information upfront gives you that comparison information that will be needed to know how things are progressing and, and to make sure that things have been protected moving forward. And, and I do, it's my understanding that there was some comments about having another consultant would be redundant, but I also believe that redundancy in science means something is actually repeatable and therefore more likely to represent an actual phenomenon or occurrence that's happening at the site. So getting the same results is good quality control for a data set. Uh, and it will help make sure that we actually do know what's happening at the site. And having extra data, even duplicates, blanks, et cetera, is just good scientific practice. So that's kind of the summary of what my thoughts are on having a third-party independent consultant. I, I do encourage the commission to do it because I, I don't have the expertise to comment on the hydrology piece, nor any of the engineering pieces. And I think it's valuable to have somebody there to do that for you and to help go through that information for you to make sure that the best decisions are made on this project moving forward.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
That's what I've got. Yep.
That's it? Okay. Let's, um, let's just run through, and any commissioners have any questions? Not necessarily comments, just questions of, of Mr. Sullivan that are, that are fresh and new since last time he was here, starting with Commissioner Spence.
You went through, Mr. Sullivan, you went through the list of things that you think that we need expert opinions on that you're not qualified to do. And you ran through it so fast, I couldn't possibly write it all down. Is it all the same things that you recommended in your report, or is there anything extra?
I think most of, some of the things in the report, I mean, the big thing is I, I'm not a hydrogeologist, and I think that's a key point for this site, knowing that the objective is to reconnect wetlands on the property to areas where there's obviously been excavations done and potential for fractures in bedrock, et cetera. I can't comment to that information. And so I think that that's probably one of the key pieces. I also can't comment to you know, how, how the site could be flowing in the groundwater to other areas. I mean, I can give a general overview, but I am not an expert. And so to get that sort of expert opinion on the record for the commission, I think it's important to have at least two, two experts on the record. So I think that the, the hydrogeology is important, but I, I will also say I'm not an engineer. So if there's engineering questions, I can't comment as an expert on those.
If I can ask you to list the things that you think a hydrogeologist should opine on for us? I have these to review the documentation. And what else did you have in that list of?
Yep. So review documents, any of the sampling plans or data collection efforts. So that could be things like where groundwater wells would be installed, where soil borings would be collected from. And then also reviewing the, the data sets that come out of those sampling efforts would be some of the major pieces. You know, there, a hydrogeologist is going to have a much better understanding of if any of the groundwater flows or, or any sort of plumes are reasonable, and if that's what is actually happening at the site.
Okay. I think that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Spence. Commissioner Stewart, any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I'm, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Masaraco?
I'm good right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Gingrich?
I'm good right now.
And then Commissioner Hall?
Nothing here.
All right, great. Okay. Um, I will now turn it over to Kevin and the applicant to say what they want to say.
Thank you, Chairman Romano and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street here in Monroe. So a, a, a couple of things right at the top. Yes, we did submit extensive amount of information yesterday. Commissioner Gingrich, we weren't trying to do that to dump a bunch of information or expect the commission to review it and be able to opine on it tonight. Not at all. We know that this is a process. We know that, you know, we've been trying to solicit comments and feedback, and we've been maintaining that we are constantly trying to revise the plans in response to all these comments. All we were doing was submitting that information, and we wanted a chance to review that information with the commission tonight. Obviously, understanding that it's going to take, you know, more time for that really to be digested and understood. time for that really to be digested and understood. We, we are hoping that Chris Sullivan and the Southwest Conservation District can also review that information and possibly offer some additional opinions. We've been trying to work with everyone and be responsive to everyone and all the comments and concerns that we've heard to date. So that was, that was the reason we submitted it, because we wanted to, we had it available. We wanted to get it to you. We submitted a number of different things. We submitted kind of two packages. One package was focused on a lot of the concerns that have been raised regarding the environmental condition of the property and some of the property's history. So we submitted a letter and a package of information that included manifests and testing analytical data for every substantial import activity that is taking place on the property for the property's duration. As we've testified and maintained as part of our project, we're incorporating a material intake protocol that has, that has requirements before material comes on the property. That has been in, been followed, or procedures have been in place since the first shovel full of material ever came onto the property. So we provided all of that documentation to demonstrate that there has been record-keeping and monitoring and manifest required for any import before it was brought to the property. We also included a sampling of certificates of conformity, which are required to be provided by anyone who brings material to the property, and it includes a certification that the material meets the definition of clean fill. We provided just kind of one for kind of each customer that's been on the property. There are actually well over 4,000 of those that could be produced representative of everything that's come to the property. And I, and I'm not suggesting we give you all 4,000 sheets of paper. That's a travesty to the environment, but the, the information is, is readily available. And, and the last component of that submission was a comprehensive evaluation, including soil sampling and surface water sampling conducted by Derek Jones, our LEP. And that basically was a summary and assessment of the sampling of representative materials across the entire property and a sampling with chemical analysis of the surface water at the deepest northern reaches of the property. And Derek Jones, our LEP, is here this evening and can run through that information for the commission's benefit. So that was one of the large sets of information that we submitted. The other package that we submitted was a formal response to comments and revised submission materials, revised detailed site design plans, site design drawings, revised engineering report, and detailed point-by-point responses to comments issued by Denise, the wetlands agent, and Scott Schatzlein, the town engineer, regarding our site design, the stormwater management component of it, our analysis and all of that. We also provided responses and a summary of the changes that we've incorporated into our set in response to Chris Sullivan's memo from the Southwest Conservation District, and we also provided some additional responses to the common letters issued by the professionals hired by the intervenor. So we included some bullets and some response to the letter provided by George Logan at Remechological and also the letter provided by Alta, by Alta Environmental. So we have been, from the beginning of this process, we are focused on trying to move this property forward, and we believe our application materials represent the best way for this site to be restored. We understand and are appreciative of the concern about the history on the property that kind of, and we've been able to provide additional documentation to show that this site is clean, and what we're proposing is only going to bring clean material in the future. We want to address this property and get it back into the right place so that we can move this project and property forward. So we have, we have a presentation that we can give the commission to kind of summarize those changes, talk about some of those aspects. And then again, Derek Jones, our LEP, is here, who can talk about our sampling that was conducted, the chemical analysis that was produced, and the results of that analysis. And then we can kind of answer any additional questions that the commission may have, that Chris may have, because again, we're, we're here and we're excited to, to move this project forward. Before I go into the plan changes in, or, or the other changes to our materials, I think, I think it would be a good, good time to talk, I guess, and maybe have Bill Kenny address the surface water in the northern end of the site, because I know that was something that Chris just mentioned. Again, we're not contesting or challenging that that exists, that it's there. You know, I think active construction sites, things have been flow and, and could be considered. We've had that discussion, but I'm going to let Bill talk a little bit about just that surface water. But again, I think we're also trying to address that with our overall project, and we've provided some additional enhancements in other areas. But I'll, I'll hand it to Bill now to talk about that.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. I'm, I'm Bill Kenny, the Principal William Kenny Associates in Fairfield. I'm a professional wetland scientist and soil scientist and landscape architect, and was, am responsible for the mapping of wetlands and water courses on the property most recently this, earlier this year. And when we considered that area, the pooling of water in the bottom of the hole, we did look at it as we do active construction sites, and within the definition of a water course within the state statutes and your regulations, section, I believe, section two of your regulations, that water courses can be artificial, and clear examples are drinking water reservoirs, and it goes from reservoirs to swimming pools. So there are many situations where you have bodies of water that are not regulated on a regular basis, and, and within, somewhere in between a swimming pool and a drinking water reservoir are active construction sites. And so we look at both the condition of the feature as well as its temporal standing. How, how long, is this more of a permanent feature or temporary? So because of the temporary nature of that feature and its condition within an active site, that was how we came to that conclusion. But that being said, we're pleased to consider it a water course. It certainly meets the definitions, and then within those mitigating factors, though. So, but we'll consider it that. But I think some very important things to, to keep in mind with regard to this is that the reason that that exists is the same reason that the wetlands on the side are there. The water that should be going to those wetlands, which is the whole, one of our primary objectives, to restore those wetlands, that water's going to the bottom of the hole and creating that feature. So, you know, our position would be, we remove that ponding in the bottom of the hole to restore the wetlands. And that is, if you are looking for mitigation for removing the water in the bottom of the hole, you end up with a restoration of the wetlands two and three. So that's our, just some information to consider with regard to that.
Thanks, Bill. So, so I can, I can kind of run through, what I'd like to do now is I'd, I'd like to run through the plan changes we've incorporated, and then give Derek Jones, our LEP, a chance to run through the report that he prepared and review the results of that, and then we'd be happy to kind of answer any questions that, that anybody has. And I guess I just asked Donna, would you be able to make me a presenter so I can share my screen? Oh, no, she looks frozen.
Hold on, I'm doing it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So again, so, so thank you again, everybody, for, for everyone's time. So we're here tonight to obviously the continuation of the public hearing for 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence Drive, just to orient everybody. This is obviously the, the northern end of the town of Monroe, part of the Pepper Tree Business Park. Two properties, as shown here, 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence. So we've, we've made a number of revisions. Now, a lot of these are relatively minor in nature from a big-picture standpoint, but they are responsive to all of the comments and questions raised by, by the commission, staff, and Southwest Conservation District, and even those raised by the intervenor. So from a, from a site plan standpoint, this is the, the previously proposed site plan, our, our current revision. We made some very minor tweaks to how the proposed office building was designed and graded. We changed the grades and reduced where, and provided some additional control where the stormwater was flowing, so that stormwater from this impervious surface can be run along and collected along a gutter, collected into a catch basin, and then treated through a hydrodynamic separator prior to go, prior to being discharged into the detention basin, rather than utilizing filter strips along the edges of the paved areas. We also added a permanent construction entrance, which is something that the town engineer had requested we incorporate as part of this project until the balance of the site could be developed. From a grading and drainage standpoint, for a grading standpoint, excuse me, we made some pretty substantive changes in response to the comments raised by everybody. Previously, we had shown, you know, an elevation for this northerly pad higher so that we were kind of maintaining a three-to-one slope up from the existing edge through the vernal pool envelope and then leveling that out. And there's a lot of concern about the overall volume of material that would be required to be imported to accommodate that, and if we could lower that, that overall pad, as the commission is, is, you know, aware, our previous, our current application, our previous application had the need to import approximately 1.3 million cubic yards of fill. A lot of that had to do with the size and the height of this pad to the north. So our proposed revisions and our proposed plans that were submitted, we significantly reduced the height of that pad, and we actually reduced the amount of fill material required by 25%. So we actually brought that import down from over 1.3 million yards down to about 980,000 yards, which is a considerable reduction. And we were able to do that, you know, primarily by focused on these grades, and I think that's best shown through this section, which you can see, this is where we had shown before. We were trying to propose that three-to-one slope up from that existing edge and then a finished grade up top. What we're proposing now is to essentially really shallow that out considerably. We brought that pad elevation down from about 483 down to 466. That's really as shallow as we can bring it and still make sure we're providing positive drainage pitch from this elevation back towards those wetlands to really achieve our goal of rehydrating the wetland. And you can see that in our, in our revised plan. We, we've cut that height down, but, but that really is the control. You know, we were looking at this existing edge as, as the material has been removed, and we have to make sure we can still drain to that and still try to get that, that water to drain in kind of more to the southern reach of that wetland, which is what we're doing through here. We're able to kind of bring that water down and around. It feeds through here, but it can also concentrate some and, and put that into a swell to kind of feed that lower southern reach before it would then flow back to the north. So that's a, that's, that's a considerable revision we've incorporated into our plans in response to comments from staff, response to comments from Chris. We wanted to get that down as low as we possibly could, but still achieve our overarching goal of rehydrating those wetlands. And I think, you know, that, that's, that's our goal from the beginning. I think that goal was, was agreed to and reinforced through Chris Sullivan's report. That is the best way to address and restore the site based on the impact that took place from a previous owner that we're trying to address as part of this application. We also made some revisions to the stormwater basin in the southeast corner of the site. Some of the comments that we received from the Aquarian Water Company as part of our site walk was, you know, concern about trying to maintain and maximize the buffer through here. We've addressed this. We've modified this, this area here, and we're providing additional, not only trying to create some additional wetlands adjacent to the onsite wetlands that just barely cut this, covered this property, but also providing additional upland enhancement in that area with some additional plantings and things like that to kind of really establish a better limit and corner down here to provide some of that additional buffer that the Aquarian Water Company was looking for. The, you know, we made other minor tweaks. I'm going to go through them, you know, not to go in too much detail, but from a utility standpoint, there was a comment about the location of our septic field. We made adjustments to that so that, to address some of the comments from Chris Sullivan and Southwest Conservation District. You can see we shifted this over to make sure that there was adequate separation from, you know, existing constraints in that area. The, our landscape plan, we've made some revisions to this to provide additional plantings in a number of different areas. We enhanced the well-in and upland buffer planting up in this northeast corner. We added some additional plantings, further recommendations through Chris Sullivan and the Southwest Conservation District. The, we also provided, you know, some additional plantings throughout here, better clarified exactly where the limit of the wetland markers are, and we provided a number of additional wetland markers to really kind of establish those edges, establish those limits, and to ensure that once we're, we're through this process, there's a very clear demarcation of, you know, where, where future development could come, could come into play, but, you know, where buffers are being established and protected and maintained as we move forward with the life of this property. There was also a comment from Chris regarding the commission may want to consider having a conservation easement granted or placed on the property. The applicant is actually willing to consider providing a conservation easement, easement on the property. We haven't provided a plan showing exactly where we would propose for that to be located, partly because we think that this overall application materials and design is still kind of in a, subject to change based on additional comments and feedback received by you and by Chris and everybody else. So, but we're, while, while we're willing to, to grant the conservation easement over the wetlands and even to provide some additional buffer areas, we have not provided a plan as of yet, because I think we're still trying to seek more input, try to see how we can make our project better and still achieve our overarching goals. And then from a landscape plan standpoint, I did want to show that, you know, so we added additional plantings up in the northeast corner along these wetland systems, but we also added additional plantings and upland enhancements around the, surrounding the modified stormwater basin in the southeast corner of the, of the property adjacent to the land owned by Aquarian Water Company. Our lighting plan, we made a minor tweak based on comments from actually planning and zoning, really no substance from the Wetlands Commission standpoint. We've made a number of revisions to our phased soil erosion sediment control plans, primarily in response to a number of comments that came from Scott Schatzlein, the town engineer. For phase one, we provided additional demarcation and technical analysis of where all the contributing watersheds are to the various soil erosion sediment control basins and traps. We've also analyzed each area in each phase and ensured that we are matching pre and post rates of one-off even during construction as part of this project. And, and so we, so Scott, the town engineer, had some really good thoughtful comments, and we were able to address all of those. He also had made a request that we provide some additional de-watering locations along the, the eastern edge of the site through here. We've been able to provide some additional information for that and add some of those additional watering, de-watering locations to be used during construction and provided additional detail on how that water would be pumped and then discharged into this easterly wetland system to ensure that there wouldn't be any potential for any kind of sediment-laden water or anything else being, contributing into that area. Again, there were concerns about that water and its chemical makeup, and if there's a potential impact if that water was used to de-water into these wetland systems. Again, Derek Jones will provide a more of a comprehensive summary, but he did create, he did take surface water samples of that water, and it did come back clean. So I think, I think Mr. Logan had some concerns about levels and concentrations of metals in that area, and thankfully that, that water tested where there are no impacts, there is no potential for concern regarding if that water was introduced into these wetland systems. So again, we're, we're, we're very pleased that we're able to. So again, we're very pleased that we're able to, again, reiterate that the site is clean, the surface water is clean, that, you know, and that there are no potential impacts associated with what we're doing, or at least the prior activities. We revised phase two, again incorporating a lot of the comments from Scott, and then again for phase three of that plan as well. So the overall quantity of material obviously has been reduced. So the, some of the quantities within the various phases will be adjusted slightly, but overall, it's a considerable improvement, I think, from what our initial application was. And that's what we're excited to be able to do as we go through this process is to continue to make our application better so that our proposal for site restoration here can really achieve the goals of everybody involved in the processing of this application. So with that, I'd like to ask Derek to provide a brief presentation of the summary of his report. Derek, I do have your testing figure that I can show, but I think it'd be a good idea for you to maybe walk through what you did, the samples that you took, and then the results of those samples.
Okay. If I could just interject real quickly, a couple, just a couple of quick clarifications that are important.
Please state your name and your credentials for the record.
Sure, this is Derek Jones, a licensed environmental professional from WSP USA in Shelton, Connecticut. Been an environmental consultant since 1995. So my clarification, I just wanted to, because they're sort of crucial in understanding, you know, why we tested things. The Southwest Conservation District report talks about how imported materials was sampled at a rate of 3,000, you know, one sample per 3,000 cubic yards. And they talked about how that was one sample per 200 trucks. And then ALTA, in their August 26 letter, talks about the same thing, saying one sample out maybe every 150 trucks. The intake protocol actually has one sample every 250 cubic yards. And then it's the 3,000 numbers is a QA QC sample that's rerun by the, by Rockhead. But the, so that's maybe one sample every 15 or 16 trucks, just for to clarify. Then the Southwest Conservation District report talks about how they recommend sample be, material be brought in that meets the residential direct exposure criteria rather than the industrial commercial criteria in the remediation standard regulations. So the acceptance protocol says, you know, that they don't accept contaminated material that's been impacted by releases of oils and hazardous materials. So I just think it's very important to understand that we're not, that the applicant's not proposing to take in contaminated soils. So those are my clarifications. One more clarification, the ALTA report also talks about, you know, over a million cubic yards of material being imported to the site. I haven't heard any estimates that come even close to that. You know, we're talking in an order of magnitude or so less than that. So those are the clarifications I wanted to bring up. As far as our sampling program, we went in to the site, reviewed the different types of materials and took a representative samples of different types of materials, the processed concrete materials, asphalt piles, for other reasons that Kevin will talk about, the mixed debris, some imported soils. Basically, we sampled them for a wide range of constituents of concern that, you know, would typically be associated with these types of materials. And didn't find any materials that, any detections of chemicals of concern at, you know, there were metals that are always going to be detected in certain materials, but nothing that even approaches a regulatory standard. And we also took a sample of the pond water at the northern end of the site. And this pond water, you know, it's likely receiving lots of groundwater, lots of surface water runoff from the area surrounding the pond where lots of this mixed debris has been placed. And basically, we did a wide range of contaminants, potential contaminants that we looked at. And you can see from the analytical results that nothing was detected. There was a trace detection of chromium, which is a naturally occurring element, so. So basically, our, the conclusion of our report was that the, we didn't find any evidence that, you know, groundwater contamination is present and it's going to impact the wetlands. The, we have proposed to do, we've been authorized to do some additional testing of some existing groundwater wells at the site. Those should be available within a couple of weeks, the results from that sampling.
Thank you, Derek. You know, so part of what we've also been trying to do is to be completely forthcoming with the, all the analysis that we're doing, all the revisions that we're doing. We had provided, we have engaged, in addition to Derek from WSP, we've engaged another professional from WSP, a gentleman by the name of Ken Taylor, who's a hydrogeologist. He is doing a comprehensive review in response to the Southwest Conservation District's comments and concerns. We actually provided a copy of that scope to Chris to see if he had any comment, if there was anything that he saw maybe lacking from that scope. But that activity is underway. As part of that, we have a pretty robust sampling plan. There are wells and physometers being installed, and this actually shows the monitoring locations that are going to be evaluated as part of that hydrogeology study. They're installing physometers in all, in the vernal pools on the property in this location, and then these three up in the northeastern corner. There are additional monitoring wells on the property, which are going to be evaluated as part of this. There's monitoring wells that have been in existence on the property since 2002 in this location here in kind of the south west corner of the property. There's also a non-potable well, which has been used for dust suppression for the life of the property. That goes much deeper than a shallow groundwater well, so that's also going to be analyzed, and that's part of what Derek is looking at. And then, so, and then additional wells surrounding that easterly wetland system that's, again, up gradient from where we're trying to fill to. So additional well here and here. So this process is underway. The wells are being installed. The hydrogeologist is working on this assessment and this report. And again, we're trying to provide a comprehensive response to all of the comments and concerns raised by Mr. Sullivan, the Southwest Conservation District, because again, we're trying to figure out a way to move this property forward and to address, you know, any concerns regarding the operation, which is required in order to get the site restored. The, those were the big-picture components and changes. We wanted to make sure we reviewed with the commission. We're very excited that Chris is here tonight because obviously he has a chance to hear our presentation as well. And we understand that we delivered a lot of data. I'm sure the commission wants more time to review it. I'm sure the intervenor and his consultants will want more time to review it. We're happy to have them do it. Again, we're trying to, we're compiling everything we can. We did additional analytical testing. We've been able to document and demonstrate that the site is clean and that the allegations and the allegation that this is some toxic waste dump are completely unfounded and untrue. And we want to stop trying to focus on the past and claims of things that don't exist and focus on how we can get this site moving back in the right direction and get this restored. With that, I think that kind of summarizes the big-picture review of what we wanted to do tonight. I do think that we may have some questions for, I think some of the team may have some questions for Chris, and then, you know, again, we're happy to answer any questions or comments or concerns that anybody has. Attorney Finn, do you want to? Go ahead.
Yes, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman Ramona, I'd like to ask just a few, some questions of Chris based on some of his statements made this evening, if I have your permission to do so.
Yep, the applicant still has the floor.
Thank you. Hi, Chris, for the record, it's Steve Finn. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. Good evening, Chris. Thanks for coming tonight. I just, I want to get at some background about the Southwest Conservation District and then ask you a few specific questions. So as I understand it, the Southwest Conservation District, Conservation District is formulated or exists pursuant to Connecticut general statute. Is that correct?
Correct, to assist the state with sediment erosion control issues in the state.
Yes, I think.
In geographic areas.
Yes, I think the statute actually says the district is charged with assisting public and private agencies to protect the land and water sources and improve the quality of life for people living in the Fairfield and New Haven counties in Connecticut. Does that, does that track the statute as far as you know and what your charge is?
Yep, the areas we serve are municipalities within those two counties.
Okay. And in connection with that statutory obligation, your commission or district conducts an independent review, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in connection with your work on this project, you had other experts who are also affiliated with the Southwest Conservation District work with you in conducting the review, is that correct?
They are, they were volunteer members who I believe would have more input that would be valuable for the report from the environmental review team, which is Southwest Conserv- District, Southwest Conservation District is a board member of, and it's common practice for that organization to work with municipalities to review sites and processes just like this one.
Okay, yep. And so on your team, you had with you Dr. Randolph Steinen, who is a, is or was a geology professor at the University of Connecticut, correct?
That's correct.
And you had a soil scientist by the name of Chris Allen and Cynthia Rabenowitz, who is not only a professional soil scientist, but she's the executive director, I guess, of your, of the counterpart of the Southwest Conservation District. She's the executive director of the Northwest Conservation District. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Now, one thing that I haven't seen, and perhaps you said it the last time, is what are your qualifications? Are you a soil scientist? What are your qualifications?
No, I'm a trained environmental scientist. I worked for the state of Connecticut DEP for over 11 years. Before that, I did water quality monitoring for another 11 years. I've worked on remediation projects for the state for most of that time while I was in the agency, also working on various water quality projects. And I do believe that most of this I did mention at the beginning of the last meeting that I attended.
All right, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm not that familiar with exactly what an environmental scientist is. Do you have a degree?
Yes, course.
And it's a bachelor's in environmental science or something else?
A bachelor's in environmental science is correct.
Okay, all right. Now, you wrote a very thorough report, and in that report, you made a number of recommendations in connection with this application, correct?
I did.
Yeah, and those recommendations included soil testing and water testing at the site, correct?
Yes.
All right, and you also recommended that in connection with the project, the applicant hire a hydrogeologist, is that correct?
That is correct. And as I stated earlier tonight, I believe the commission should also have one.
All right, but in fairness, Mr. Sullivan, your report did not say anything about, your thorough report did not say anything about the hiring an independent hydrogeologist. Your report said that the applicant should hire a hydrogeologist, is that correct?
If that's what it said, it's probably true, but I also believe that the commission should have one, as I stated at the last meeting, because I cannot speak to those hydrogeologist expert testimony.
Okay, all right. Well, but are you familiar with the firm WSP, also formerly known as Leggett-Bressiers? Are you familiar with that firm?
WSP, I didn't know, but Leggett-Bressiers, and I believe Graham is the end of that. I do know that name.
All right, I think WSP is now, is now the, taken over or is the firm that sort of is working in conjunction with the experts who are formerly employed by Leggett-Bressiers and Graham. Now, is that firm, is that known to, that firm known to you?
Which one, WSP? I believe I just said I don't know that firm.
Leggett-Bressiers and Graham.
I am, I do know that name of that organization, yes.
Okay.
They were acquired by WSP, just for clarity.
I did not know that.
And have you been involved in reviewing projects where Leggett-Bressiers and Graham was involved?
It's possible. I worked on a lot of different project sites while I was at DEP. And as you know, there are numerous consulting firms that work on these projects in the state. I can't say yes or no to that answer.
Do you have any reason to have the opinion that the experts and the consultants from Leggett-Bressiers and Graham are not accurate in their findings and opinions? Or any reason to question their results or opinions?
As I stated earlier, I believe it's important to have multiple responses and sets of data for any sort of scientific investigation. It doesn't speak to the quality of the work done by any of the firms, but I believe that duplicate samples and multiple analysis makes for a better project in the end.
I don't think you answered my question. Do you have any basis to render an opinion that the work of Leggett-Bressiers and Graham is not accurate or otherwise reliable?
I have no knowledge that I would be able to speak to that question one way or another.
All right. And so we have your report here, and I know you had no time to review the documentation that was submitted, but we did, and I understand that. So, but as Kevin just reviewed and as the documents that we submitted show, and as Derek just testified to, there has been extensive testing done on this property since you rendered your report. And the testing shows that there are no concerns about environmental concerns for water or soil in the samples that were taken. And it's also been represented that additional samples are going to be taken. I think in your report, you wanted more information about the material that had been on site and how it got into the site and whether that was clean or not. That's been tested as well. We did follow your recommendation to increase the rigor of testing any materials that will be brought to the site to be used as fill in connection with this project. So my question to you is that in light of the fact that there are, there's no indication that there are any environmental contaminants on this property and that we have followed your recommendation that we test more rigorously the material to be brought to this property, what changed? What's changed now that you feel that in addition to the hydrogeologists you wanted the applicant to hire, that we should also hire or the commission should also hire its own independent hydrogeologist without ever seeing the report of, without ever reviewing any of the documents we submitted?
I believe that my report is actually saying a certified hydrogeologist be hired. I'm not sure that it says anything about the applicant or the town actually is the person or entity hiring the hydrogeologist. And I would also like to respond to your question with a question. And I would also like to respond to your question with a question of how many samples were actually collected on the property that were summarized today. I have not reviewed the documentation that came in yesterday, but I know it's a very large property, and looking at the map that was included, it looks like there's six dots for sampling of materials that are existing on the property. Now, it's my understanding, as it was presented, that those are piles on the surface of existing stockpiled material and nothing to do with anything actually underground, is that correct?
That's great, that's great.
Yes, but that's certainly something that we, we can remedy. And if you were, if you had had time to review the report and had indicated that you would want more samples taken, that's certainly something that the applicant would, would undertake. So, I'm just, I, I understand your point that perhaps the testing, we could have tested more sites, but that's, that's different than saying we need to hire an independent or pay for an independent hydrogeologist before we've even gotten all those results, and before you've heard or read the report of our hydrogeologist. I do know that your report does talk a lot about the geology and the fractures in the rock, and so apparently someone on your team that reviewed this is familiar with geology. I also think that you're, on page two of your report, you recommend that a hydrogeologist is hired for the project. Now, I just assumed that that meant that the, the person who's not, not in connection with the application, but in connection with the project, that the applicant hire a hydrogeologist. So, that's where my view that you originally were recommending that the applicant hire a hydrogeologist came from. At least that's, I think is a fair interpretation of your report. So, we have the test results, we submitted the manifest. I hear, I heard what you said about, you know, reams of documents to review with regard to the manifest. There is an intervenor here, the intervenor, I'm sure, has indicated the desire to review those manifests. No one was expecting you or your team to review those manifests, but this project's going to be vetted by not only your district commission, but as well as the intervenor, who has a team of experts. So, you know, I, I don't, I'm trying to make sure that we don't overdo this, that we don't belt and suspender this in some kind of, frankly, paranoia that something untoward is going on here. We submitted test results, we're willing to do more test results. We've hired a hydrogeologist from a very reputable firm. We're using very reputable labs to do all the testing. We've followed your, we've increased the testing for the material that's going to be brought to the site by, by tenfold, as far as I can understand, as far as I can see. It, it seems to me that, and besides which, Chris, I mean, your report says you would be willing to review your opinions based on more information. It seems to me that you are leaning towards making opinions tonight based on no new information. And to me, that doesn't seem like it's an independent review. And what I'm asking for is for you to keep an open mind, if you, you've been invited to ask us to do more testing, you're invited to ask us to do, provide more information, but to go to the expense of hiring an independent hydrogeologist, this seems inappropriate at this time. And, 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 and that's what I'm, that's my major point. Look, you can, you can make the argument that, you know, doubling up on every single expert is always a good thing, but you have to take into consideration the financial considerations, the time, and fairness. And I, I would be surprised if on every project that your commission reviews, that you're recommending that because it's just good science, that we double up on every single project. Now, I know this project is unusual, but we've seen the level of detail that the applicant's already gone to with regard to its experts. It's hired two additional experts since you rendered your report, and I would just ask you to keep an open mind on this. I think that's all I have, and I want to thank you for your time. I know you're, you're independent, I know you, you don't have any axe to grind with anyone, but this has real impact on my client, and before we just sort of leap to the conclusion that this is the best way to go, I, I'd ask you to, to take another look and wait until you see the additional information that's been, is going to be submitted and has been submitted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Attorney Finn. Chris, you have any?
I do have a question. Mr. Sullivan, if I could go first, since I was just on the hot seat for a little bit there. So, through, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Finn, I just have a, a very broad question. It's obvious that you've worked on a lot of applications for wetland projects. Do you think it is unusual for wetlands commissions to hire experts of their own when there's a project of this complexity? I mean, I, I believe that oftentimes, commissions will have extra experts brought, extra experts, that's hard to say, brought in to, to assist with reviewing data and information that's provided to them by the applicant. So, is it, is it not common for that to happen? Because I believe it is.
So, here's my response, and that's a fair question. My experience is when there's an intervenor who's hired its own experts, who's, that haven't had a site visit, and where these experts have done extensive work already, it is unusual to require the applicant to pay for an independent expert for the commission. Because, as I said, this application is going to be vetted, has been vetted very, very closely by the intervenor and, and his experts.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one more comment. I don't want to belabor this too much longer, I think I made my position pretty clear, but I just feel that not having an expert for the town will put the commission at a disadvantage when they are tasked with making the decision on this property and being able to appropriately and properly review the information that is going to be presented to them. You know, all these, these, there's basically three parties, and they're all going to have their experts. And I think there's a lot of value for the commission members to have their own experts to provide information and interpretations to them. As we heard tonight, there was interpretation of my report that was not exactly as presented in who was supposed to be hiring the hydrogeologist. So, I think any of these experts will have opinions and interpretations that can come into play, and I think that the commission would be at a disadvantage to not have their own expert to help review the information that comes into them for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I just had a couple of other clarification things, so again, Kevin Sullivan for the record. One, I, I failed to mention before, part of our revised submission materials was a revised material intake protocol, where we actually provided additional parameters with how soils has to be tested prior to being brought to the site at a frequency of one per 250 cubic yards. So, there's another, a number, we've made a number of other revisions and changes to that in response to the Southwest Conservation District comments and even some, from some other comments. So, so I failed to mention that, but it was included in the revised material. So, I think there may have been some back and forth on stuff, and I may not have made it abundantly clear that that was revised and resubmitted with this, with the last collection of information. I did have just one question to Chris about your recommendations, very friendly question. You did, you did have a recommendation to, that an independent third party is hired to inspect the sediment and erosion control devices on the property, and it would be needed for the full timeframe of the construction project. My question is, so, the, the, the property is covered under general permits with DEP for industrial activity and for stormwater discharge from construction activities. And part of those permit requirements, the applicant is required to have an SEC inspection done after every rainfall that generates more than a half an inch of rain, and those SEC reports are prepared and kept in the SWIP and held on site and things like that. Are you, are you, just for clarification, are you suggesting that an additional SEC inspection take place? Or would yours replace the one that the applicant is required to have to satisfy the requirement of the general permits?
I think that it would, an additional one would be helpful throughout the project. And again, it's, it's to have that, a third party not affiliated with the applicant responsible for filing those forms and, and reports over time, and to make sure that everything is done. That's, that's a quick answer to a long question.
So, so you're suggesting that a professional who's putting his name and license on the line and preparing SEC inspections would somehow do something untoward? And we need to have double inspections for a property, because?
No, I'm not suggesting that there's any sort of untoward, that's the word you said, I'm sorry, you broke up for a second there. That there's any sort of malfeasance or that would be done on those inspections. But again, I think that the scale of this property and the project, it's important to make sure that everything is done to protect the town moving forward, and also the environment in the area moving forward. So, it, it doesn't hurt to have a second set of eyes reviewing this, sort of, those installations and the reports that are coming out of those installations after precipitation events, et cetera.
Okay, I, I just was curious if you were looking for a, a second inspector in addition to the one. I haven't, you know, I've been a part of a lot of projects, very large, you know, million square foot distribution facilities. I've never seen a project have duplicative inspections from an SEC standpoint, but I, I agree with you, the more eyes on something, the, the better the chances that nothing slips past. But I think that there's also other mechanisms where, you know, the commission can require that reports be provided to the town, and then the town can act in a different enforcement arena or enforcement manner if something comes up. Because I think that, as is evidenced with this property, there were continuous reports generated and submitted to the town that were submitted and reviewed, yet we still are in the condition that we are in right now. But I think that was it for me.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make one more comment on that. And what you said about transparency of the reports and having the town be able to inspect things as well, that would be, in my mind, having a second set of eyes going out to the site and inspecting the installation for sediment and erosion control, I think that that would be adequate at that point. Just as a clarification.
Mr. Chairman, if I may weigh in for the intervenor, unless you want to hear from the commission first? I do want to do the commission screen first, so that.
Thank you.
Because now that we've been with this, all this extra information, you know, we are the deciding body, so we should try to get our, while they're fresh in our minds. So, I'm going to go through it, and, you know, my commissioners again, any questions or comments to the applicant? Starting with Commissioner Spence.
Okay, I had a few small questions for Kevin. And this has nothing to do with the experts at this point. With the, with the revised plan, now I haven't really had a chance, obviously, to look at the revised plan too much. The change in slope up here that you filled in. I'm, I'm, I don't even have it in front of me right now, so I can't. But the picture that I saw online, it shows a very great, a very slope, very slow slope, a very low grade. And is that going to change the ultimate development plans for the future after this project is done? Are we going to be able to maintain that after new building plans are submitted for however this property is going to be developed?
So, it would be able to maintain, because what we're trying to do is, you know, previously, we were proposing to have that, you know, edge through the limits of the vernicle envelope be at a steeper slope, so that it was a very clear demarcation, okay, this is where it's flat, this is where it's, you know, a slope. In response, but in, but we heard the concerns about the amount of material and the, and the height of that. So, in response to that, yes, it, it is much shallower. But I still think that we can provide, you know, one of the things that we did in our landscape plan is we have extensive plantings all the way through this area, and then we have an additional wetland markers proposed at the edge of that area. So, I think we can still achieve the same goal in terms of establishing that edge, clearly demarcating where, where, you know, where is future development area and where, what needs to be protected. So, I, I don't think it's going to affect that, and we certainly weren't intending it for, for that to affect it in any way. You know, we were really more trying to just be responsive to some of the other concerns. And again, I think we won't have as much of the topography and the terrain to serve as that demarcation. We'd have to do that with other, other measures with additional landscaping and markers and things like that.
Okay. But would, I, I'm not using my language very well, I'm afraid. Would this particular arrangement change the way your, your initial development plans will evolve? Can, can you still do the same things that you were hoping to do with the finished product? With this particular landscape arrangement as opposed to the original one?
Yes, yes, we can, yes, we can. And that's, and that's, again, we, you know, there were some comments from, from, from the Southwest Report and from Denise that were saying, well, can't we cut 25 feet off this? We brought it down as low as we possibly could, but still achieved those other goals. Because we still want to be able to get water to this and restore this watershed and rehydrate this well. So, so yes, we, we did limit the, the reduction in height, but still make sure we have the, the, the topography and the terrain that we need to still, you know, make sure that doesn't get depleted in the future.
Okay. This has to do with the development on the other end of the small office building. Is the detention, detention basin or sedimentation basin, whichever terminology you want to use, that is on that property, is that going to be the property and responsibility of that? Or is that going to be shifted to somebody else?
No, it's a, it's an onsite stormwater management basin, so that the maintenance of that would be as part of the maintenance of the, you know, the balance of the site. And we did have a maintenance plan included in our engineering report for that.
Okay. That's it, my questions, but I do have a statement that I wanted to make. One of the sessions that I went to, the conferences for Cackey Wick, which is, for those who don't know that, I don't even remember the name of it, has to do with inland wetland and conservation commission members. There were some attorneys that are very well-known and very voiced in wetlands concerns. And Attorney Mark Brant, I don't know if anybody knows him, one of the things that he mentioned was he had a huge project. And the commission that was in charge of this project had requested many outside experts. In fact, it cost the developer $500,000 extra for these outside experts. And in the long run, the applicant said that was the best $500,000 he ever spent, because all of the independent experts agreed with the applicant's experts. So, the commission could go home happy that they made a really well-informed, non-arbitrary decision. And the applicant was happy because nobody would fight with him. Everybody went home happy, it was more expensive, but he said it was the best money he ever spent. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, because that has really sat with me over the years as I've listened to this kind of back and forth. So, thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Spence. Commissioner Stewart.
Great. Kevin, are you aware, or could you provide us with any documents of similar projects with, with clean fill to this, this level, that were either successful or not successful as far as contamination to surrounding areas and groundwater?
I, not off the top of my head, I'm not aware of anything like this. I mean, again, we're, we're. I mean, again, we're, we're, we're simply proposing to import clean fill. I'm not aware of any clean fill import project that have had, um, uh, i- i- issues like that. We could do some research and, um, I probably want to defer to maybe Derek on the environmental side. He may have a lot more familiarity with something like that, but I'm certainly not aware of anything like this. We're unique. We're trying to restore a site and to, you know, enhance and improve the wetlands on the property. So this whole application is unique. Um, you know, a lot of bigger applications where there's, yeah, where there's multiple consultants and peer reviews and things like that, that's usually in response to, um, a project that's proposing to impact the, the wetlands. This is, this is different, a little bit unique. But I'm not, I'm not aware of anything like that. I can, we can maybe do some research, see if we can find some information on something like that.
Yeah, it would make me feel more comfortable if you could find something. Um, I hate to do something for the first time, obviously. Earlier you, you mentioned that you would be proposing to put, um, virgin, um, material, um, below ground, seasonal groundwater elevation. Is that on the plan somewhere that we can see at this point?
Um, you know, there may or may not, uh, it's, I, I think it may be covered in notes, but we can certainly provide additional clarity on that. As, as you probably saw on your site work, there's a lot of material stockpiled on the site that was either overburdened, excavated above the ledge before the ledge was removed, or there's screenings, which is a byproduct of the crushing operation. So all those materials, this is all along the eastern edge, this is actually all native overburden and, and, and rock dust. This is all that, there's a large pile of quarry screenings. Um, all that material is, is, you know, more than sufficient to place in the, the deepest lower reaches of the site to the north end along Independence.
Could you put something on your cross-sections in those areas, um, where you're, where you see your groundwater elevation and a similar line where you're going to be putting native material, uh, clean native material to that elevation so it's clear to the, to the people who are doing this project?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, and then the next question is regarding your, your impervious liner, your, your impervious liner detail. You kind of talk about installing this liner four feet below grade. You talk about using a 40 mil liner. You also talk about potentially using a, a, a clay impervious liner. Um, but I can't see where that clay impervious liner, how thick that would be.
Sure. So we did, um, we did have some revised information on that and, and thank you for bringing that up because I wanted to, to bring this back. We also expanded the limits of that impervious liner to include the entire limits of the watershed that would be contributing to that easterly wetland system. So that's the full, I think it's 9.7 acres or so. So as we're matching the watershed that was contributing to this wetland in the prior condition. Um, what we, I think what our plan should stay right now is that can be either a, uh, you know, a, a mill poly fabric, or it can be a layer of, of clay, um, you know, meeting a certain impervious, um, uh, requirement and, uh, sieve analysis and things like that. Um, the, uh, we can provide, I can't remember if we had a detail on how thick that impervious material liner would need to be, but we can certainly add one to the plan. Um, and at this point, we've left it as, as kind of either or, as long as they're both effective and making sure that we can contribute and get this water back to this wetland, that's, that's the ultimate goal. So, um, you know, quite, quite frankly, some of the stuff that we've talked about in the past was, you know, making sure that in the future, if this upper pad is developed, we want to make sure that, and this becomes a parking lot, um, then that water would obviously be collected and we'd be able to still get that water to this wetland to make sure that that, that watershed is still restored and that, and that water still gets there. So, um, at this point, we're saying it can be either or, and we can certainly add a detail in, in what the, what that clay liner would need to look like in terms of depth.
Okay. Cause that, it does seem like you're missing the thickness of that clay liner. But I assume you're putting it four feet deep so you can, you can still put building, um, foundations in without, without impacting them?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that, so that surface, that surface four feet would be, would be clean, would be natural, natural material? Or would that be, would that be our process, process material, clean fill?
From the liner up?
Yes.
Um, I mean, likely be, it would, it would be additional clean fill.
Okay. So additional clean fill. And, and you, will that four feet, that four feet's deep enough to, to install utilities as well?
Yes. Yeah, we, I mean, we may, I think in the, you know, pending what other, what any potential future development plan might look like for this, you know, that would need to be modified at the time. The liner is going to go in at the end of the project once all this fill is realized. So we do have some time to make tweaks to that as needed. But at this point, as per the purpose of this application, if the fill operation is to, or if the filling is to take place, you know, independent from any other future development, then it would be placed at four feet down and then backfilled up with clean fill. And then any future, um, activities, we would, we would make any necessary adjustments that would have to be maintained or implemented to make sure that we still get that water to where it needs to go.
And, and so what, when this project is developed and you've got a parking lot, a big building and all that, and, and you're trying to send all this, all this surface water down to this vernal pool, um, do you have enough space up there to do all your development and also provide some sort of a, how would you treat that, that water come out of that parking lot?
Well, that water would be treated.
Doing zero increase and runoff or something like that. Do the numbers still work?
So, yes. Now, the, um, we would treat that water the same way that water is treated on, you know, most land use applications that, that come before this commission and are done all throughout the state. We provide, um, you know, uh, hydrodynamic separators, um, to make sure that the total suspended solids are removed to provide water quality pre-treatment prior to discharge into that area. Um, uh, from a, from an attenuation standpoint, again, we're trying to match the same contributing watershed and we kind of, we're, you know, we'd be working on what that annualized water budget would be and making sure that we'll be able to provide that in the future condition versus what's there today. Um, this area is a little bit unique because it actually drains to the Great Pine Swamp. So, um, the attenuation isn't necessarily required, but we'd also want to make sure that we're not putting too much water into that pond with respect to how those vernal pools would function in the future.
Because you, you've given up obviously, which I, I appreciate the, the elevation. You've cut that down significantly. I think you've come to the, pretty much the, the correct elevation for that. I just want to make sure that you'll be able to, to get your, your runoff to go with your treatment devices actually to make it, to make it where they need to go and install whatever, whatever ponds or, or, or treatment devices you need. Uh, but anyway, that's, that's the end of my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Lasaraco, do you have anything for the applicant?
I do. I was wondering if you had put any thought into possibly not bringing in any fill and just, uh, using the material on the site to fill the big hole in, possibly taking that mountain out that's right in the middle. I'm reading, uh, an elevation of 446. The low area is shaped like a C and it curves around on one side. So if you're standing up at the top of Independence Drive, looking down into the hole, you look across the hole and there's kind of a mountain there that's blocks your view from the scale house and all that. I mean, if that mountain was taken out and that material was put in the hole, could things be graded off properly so that when the building was built where the hole is, stormwater would naturally flow down towards the, um, the southwest and southeast side? Which is wetlands on both sides there? Why can't we feed those with that area and not bring any fill in?
So we, we certainly, you know, we, we considered the gamut of what we could do here, but once we kind of really dove into, um, you know, and build it as analysis of those, those easterly wetlands and those easterly vernal pools, you know, the, the indirect impact of the removal of that watershed is substantial. So, you know, the goal of this, of this application is to restore the watershed to those wetlands, to those vernal pools. So those vernal pools can, can rebound and become, you know, the vibrant vernal pools that they once were prior to the activity on this property. Um, and, and we could, you know?
With stormwater, really? Cause if you're going to build a building, I could see, you know, if, if you raised it up to the grade of, of Independence Drive, you know, if, if you could put a bigger building on it, cause now you have a bigger footprint, I could see it, that'd be a great idea. But your footprint is going to be the same whether it's down low or it's down high because you got the town easement on one side and you got the wetlands on the other. So you know what I'm saying? So the building you're going to build is going to be the same size, whether you bring in fill or you don't bring in fill.
Yes. The, the only difference is whether or not this wetland system gets rehydrated. And if we don't bring enough fill to get to that grade, we can't rehydrate that well. If we were to leave it at the lower elevation and, and build a building the same size, um, yes, we could achieve development goals, but we wouldn't do anything to restore the impact to the wetland that's taken place over the last 15 years.
But the only water that's going to be going into the wetlands up top is stormwater. Whatever falls in the parking lot and on the roof of the hot building in the middle of the summertime, it's 100 degrees, is going to be pushed off into the upper wetlands. Uh, it's, and if it doesn't rain, there's no water going to those wetlands. I, I just don't understand why you want to bring in so much fill? Why any fill really needs to be brought in? I'm just not convinced. If it's a money thing, you want to make money on, you know, bringing fill in and you could help out with the development? Okay, you know, we can, it's something to think about, but if, if the money of the fill that's being brought in, you know, tipping charges, that you guys are going to be putting the trucks on the scale, charging people to dump, you know where I'm going with this?
There were, there were 9.6 acres of watershed contributing to these wetlands in the past. There's 2.2 acres contributing to it now. The, the goal of this application.
After this is done, they'll, they'll still be 2.2 there later, even after this is all done. The, the property is what it, you're not adding any more wetlands on this property. You're just pushing stormwater off to the, the, whatever's the 2.2 that's existing now.
Well, we're restoring the 9.7 that were there, that was there before. We're, we're, we're trying to, there was a certain amount of water that went to these wetlands, these vernal pools in the past. We're trying to put that same amount of water back. In order to do that, we have to raise the grade so that when, when it rains, it gets there. We don't raise the grade and it's left at the 2.2, then the impacts to the wetlands and the vernal pools that have taken place over the last 15 years will remain in perpetuity.
All right. But, all right, just clarify this for me. When this whole project is done, will there still just be 2.2 acres of wetlands or they're going to be 20 acres of wetlands?
We're, we're, there's going to be 9.7 acres of watershed. Where, yeah, maybe Bill, hey, Bill, do you want to try to?
Right. If, if water isn't returned to those wetlands, they, they'll be essentially, they won't be a wetland. They'll be essentially a, an upland area like the rest of the forest. So as a commission, I think you have to make a decision whether you want that area to, over time, it's going to be functioning more as an upland than a wetland, uh, certainly not functioning as a vernal pool. And with, you know, with every project that you review that has, you know, you're reviewing projects that are development projects that where people are taking often undeveloped land and, and, and putting down some impervious surfaces. If, if all of those, uh, projects discharged to, at some point to a stream or to a wetland, um, of course they go through best management practices to make sure that the water's cleaned and everything. But if you were to withhold all that water, you would drain, you would start drying up wetlands and streams all over. It has to be released back into the environment and, and there are best management practices to ensure that you clean that water and, and, uh, allow for that balance between keeping the wetlands wet and, uh, allowing for some development. But if, if you, um, if the water doesn't come here with the new building, it's going to go to the wetland, wetland one, as it does today, uh, when it gets pumped out of the hole in the bottom of the pit. So, um...
The water that's at the bottom of the pit, once it's pumped out, you start filling in, there's no more water to pump out. You're not adding any more until the project is done and it's up to grade 10 years from then.
During, and really, I mean, in my... The proposal is to pump it to, to wetland two on the east side to begin to restore its hydrologic conditions.
All right. So once it's all pumped out and you guys start filling the big hole, the water's done. The water, you filled, you filled in the hole, there's no more water to be there and there's no more water to be pumped out.
Right. So then it's the, the water that comes with each new rain event?
In 10 years. Because the build, this, 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 this section is not going to be done for 10 years, right? Takes 10 years to bring in a million yards of, of fill?
Right. And in the interim, water with each rain event that occurs during that 10 years, that water is being collected. And then the proposal is to distribute that, distribute that evenly, relatively evenly across the western border of that wetland on the east side of the site, wetland two. Pumping during that, that 10 years. Today it's pumped to the west, it would be pumped to the east.
I'm not convinced.
I, I, I think that, I think, just to, to, to put it clear, if, if, if the wetlands commission is concerned about importing the material and raising the grade to restore the watershed, then that wetland that has reduced watershed will continue to dry up because it's getting a 20% of the water that was contributing to it before. And the vernal pools that we've seen a, a reduced activity will continue to, um, get worse and worse. And then the, the inaction will cause for that wetland area that exists today to continue to get worse.
With climate change, we're getting a lot less rain and a lot less snow anyway. So really all's we're gaining is a lot of fill in a big hole. So can we maybe put something together for my idea?
We, we submitted an alternative that showed just grading that out, I think exactly what you suggested, but that alternative doesn't achieve the goals of rehydrating the wetland. And I think even the independent reviewer, Chris Sullivan, suggested that, that is a good goal and that should be the result of the project if the other controls can be put in place to ensure that it doesn't result in any, uh, environmental concerns.
Wow. As you know, there's a lot of environmental concerns with the fill that's brought in. I mean, the water, water wouldn't be going to waste. It would be feeding, if we do my idea, the water would be going to the southwest and Anybody else have anything to say?
We're working on this, Ross. Are you, are you all set now?
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Gingrich?
Uh, nothing right now. We've probably talked to every, talked about everything right now, the last three. I'm all set. I want to reread everything again.
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
I, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I did take a couple hours today to review the new documents and Kevin, thank you for your primary document, which was very helpful in tying together, uh, all the changes you've discussed, uh, the comments from the, uh, all the different, uh, parties, the town engineer, uh, the intervenor, all, all the people that have had input, you've had a response in there, which was, I thought, very helpful, especially to me in, in understanding kind of the bigger picture. So thank you for that. And then I'm sure when the other commissioners get a chance to read that, they're going to see the, the same value to it. Uh, I also read the WSP document, or let me say, I looked at it, read the text and after trying to digest the value of it, I, I realized that I'm not an expert and I feel strongly that there should be someone on the commission or representing the commission that... or representing the commission that, that can understand it and interpret it back to us. So I'm going to, uh, uh, let's say, put my, my two cents in that I think we do need a, an independent, uh, party representing the commission. And that's, that's, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question to that, Vane? I think that was a great comment. Um, just, just a question. Um, and, and maybe it would be to, to, to Chris Sullivan. Chris, I think your experience as an environmental scientist in your career at DEP, would you have the qualifications to review the report by WSP and offer the commission a third-party guidance on that?
No. Uh, through, through Mr. Chairman, I, I can attempt to respond to. I mean, um, as far as the, the chemistry samples that were collected in the report that was submitted now, um, I could look at those data points. But as I've stated, I don't, I don't feel comfortable, and I'm not an expert in terms of a hydrogeology background and understanding, um, what's actually happening in the groundwater there. So even, you know, looking at where wells are proposed, which I haven't had a chance to look at at all, I, I'm not an expert to give, uh, an opinion and oversight to, or interpretation to the commission. I mean, I can look at the numbers from the results and see that non-detex came back, but, um, that, that's about as far as I would wanna go.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm sorry. I just meant the, the, the report by Derek Jones, the LEP, and that was, report, I didn't know if that was something that you could offer an independent review on. Because I think that was what, what Commissioner Hall was saying, is the WSP report, heard by Derek Jones, that was something that he'd want a third-party opinion on. I didn't know if you had those qualifications or not, but, um, I think we understand your position.
Yes. Um, through Mr. Chair, I, I, I had, I don't know what's in that report. I mean, if it's the soil or the particle samples that were collected as were displayed in the map, I mean, I'm certainly going to look at it and I can provide an input to it, a review of it to the commission. Um, but I, I haven't, I don't know what's in there to feel comfortable saying that I will be able to comment on everything that's in the report because I haven't reviewed it. I saw the map, that's about it.
Um, I'll say, Kevin, our, yeah, I have some questions. Um, with the, with the revised, um, import material plan, why does that change the timeline for completion?
Um, uh, you know, the, while it reduces the amount of fill required, you know, we'd still be requesting a, a, a ten-year permit simply because the, the, the time in which it is required to source nine hundred and eighty thousand cubic yards of material is subject to market factors. You know, we're gonna be, there, there are very few repositories that can receive, you know, large exports of material or large imports of material, you know. And I'll say that, um, since, uh, you know, I'd say in the past several months, while operations at the property have been halted, there's been, um, opportunities for material that could have been deposited here that wasn't and had to be turned away, um, because of, you know, because of the, 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 the need for operations to cease. Um, so I, I, we would still be requesting a ten-year permit to make sure that this, we had sufficient time to import and place the material. But, you know, if, if market factors dictate and there's available clean fill that we can bring here, we would do it as fast as possible.
But, so, so then there was a possibility that in the first plan, discussing previously, that you couldn't possibly get it maybe not done in ten years? If it could take you ten to do it, twenty-five percent less material, it could, would potentially take you, what is the age, thirty percent longer, if the same conditions were being seen, um, with the larger volumes coming?
The, the, the duration of a permit is, and the length in which a permit can be granted is governed by statutes. So we have to request the, the, the longest time of, 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 of permit that can be, that you are empowered to grant. Um, uh, so we, we would, you know, with the previous volumes or these volumes, we're, 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 we're requesting a permit for the, for the longest duration you can offer, so that we have sufficient time to source the material and place the material.
But I understand. So, but it'd be the benefit to the, to your client that it gets done faster, obviously.
Absolutely. The, the, the goal, the, absolutely.
Hope that this alternative is going to get you to the goal line quicker. This, yes. Okay. Um, it's still, and I think you said this, but I just wanna, it's still, and it's still in a three-phase operation, even with, and the volume required?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what's the downside to the, to the, what is it, three hundred and something thousand yards west to come in? There, there must be a downside. Oh, shoot.
Well, from a, um, you know, it definitely, as, as I think we discussed with, with Commissioner Spence and her questions, it definitely, um, it changes the, uh, you know, how the edge is established. Um, it's much shallower, it's, you can, you know, it seems like it's, it's much flatter. Um, you know, another downside, and, and yes, the, the, so that'd be one from a, from a site standpoint.
What's the downside of that? It actually looks to me like you actually, you know, flat area that you could potentially work with versus that slope. So that almost seems like a benefit.
Well, but we, we also want, we're, part of this is trying, again, we're before the Wetlands Commission, trying to restore and protect the wetlands and the vernal pools. So we wanna make sure that that vernal pool envelope is restored and protected and maintained. We wanna make sure that they can, you know, uh, the buffer area, at least from the, from the, you know, best we can, is, is established and maintained. We're, we're trying to, this, this whole application is to protect and enhance those well.
I understand. And I see, I'm just saying, in your, in your red line there, revised proposed grade, it's gonna, it's supposed to produce the same effect?
Well, a lot of the concerns that we heard was about the volume of the material, and several comments received said we were bringing in too much material, and we, the four eighty, four eighty-three elevation was too high. So we basically brought it down as low as we possibly could.
I understand you addressed it. My just question is that, we got this, we got, I'm thinking that there must have been some downside to this change, or else it would have been the first, you know, when you first, this is a better plan for your client, right? There must be a trade, I'm asking, what, what are you giving up to appease these, what are you giving up to appease these, these comments, which are great? I think it's great that you've, you've come up with an alternative that, that, um, the commission is probably more likely to, um, approve on your, for your client. I'm just curious to know what's, what was given up? Um, there must have been a, a, you know, you know what I mean?
We're, we're losing a three-to-one slope through that area and a better topographic demarcation of where the edge is. I, 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 I just wanna bring this back to something. This application has been prepared to restore the site and to address indirect wetland impacts which have degraded the quality and the functions of these wetlands and these vernal pools. There is not a hidden, uh, intention, uh, or, or something else. We're trying to get this, address the conditions on the property and restore the wetlands. That's the purpose of this application. We had brought it and we had established a, a steeper slope because that helps establish a better defined topographically edge. We're now shallowing that out. We lose, that's what we lose. We lose that defined edge. We lose walking up to the edge of a hill and looking down a three-to-one slope that's been, that's been planted and vegetated with, well, and, you know, upland shrubs and plants and trees and things like that. That's what we've lost. We've lost that vertical drop from the edge of development and the protected buffer. That's what we've lost. That's how the application has been, um, lessened, is that we've lost that vertical edge, that additional physical in the field topographic demarcation. We're shallowing that out. It's less pronounced, it's less significant. We can plant it and we can still do it with other means, but that's what we've lost. That's what the app, that's what the application's lost.
So the, so the effectiveness of the wetlands restoration is, is lessened in some, some respect?
Well, I, I think, I think in any, I think in any, uh, any piece of property, when, if you're, if you see a, if you see a hill, right, if you see that there's an area that's steeper versus shallower, you're less inclined to go down that hill. You're less inclined to push beyond the limits of something that's flat. But I think, I think this commission sees it all the time. I mean, how often have, has this commission, um, evaluated violations from homeowners because their backyard's flat and they just push a little bit further into that edge than they could've? And if that was on a steep slope, they'd be less inclined to push into that edge and use it as, as, as usable area.
Okay. So the downside is, um, is just, it's, 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 there's no slope involved anymore? Yeah, just try to, just try to, alternatives mean, you know, for, for us to evaluate. Trying to see there's, you know, they're not, they can't, they must have, they must have some kind of differences. There must be a, but I think I get it now. Um, the, uh, my last question was about, I quickly looked through the import, um, uh, proposal for the, uh, violation of imported material. And just one thing I just wanna ask for clarification on, and whoever is the best to answer the question. In, in one part I read, read that there was a, there was a one test, one, one sample per two hundred fifty yards, sample for three thousand yards. I'm not sure I understand what the difference between those two are.
Uh, sure. So, so, um, there's, there's kind of two elements going on with this material intake protocol. There's the, um, testing required before material comes to the property, which is, which is an obligation of the generator of the material. And as part of that, the generator has to provide certain analytical testing to this facility prior to receiving any of that material. And then, so that's the first step. So if, if there is a building being demolished and the demolition debris would qualify as clean fill, then there needs to be analytical testing and manifest prior to that building being torn down, which says this, this, this is clean, this is meets the definition, and this can be discharged at a location that can receive clean fill. If there's soil generated on a piece of property, the soil has to be tested by the generator at a frequency of one test every two hundred and fifty cubic yards of material. So if the DOT is doing a project and they're generating soil that has to go somewhere, that soil has to be tested by the DOT prior to being brought anywhere, and the analysis of that, of the, of the results of that testing has to be provided to the facility prior to receive it. So that's all the testing that has to take place before the material enters the property. Then there's a QA QC component. The QA QC is what we provide, we provide additional information on what's required by the generator before it gets to the property. And then the, the, the QA QC is something that the facility does to, to, to verify and to spot check on a routine basis, material that's been brought to the property.
Okay. And that's the one in three hundred, in three thousand yard sample?
Yes.
Um, now, would a pre, uh, a pre-demolition survey, um, would that cover any potential, um, uh, things that would be considered contaminated, like for demolition? A pre-demolition survey, and like you mentioned the building, if someone's tearing down a building, and they do the environmental testing first, before they tear it down, is that, is there, uh, they do like the pre, pre, um, asbestos survey and all this stuff, that covers the same, it's like redundancy over what your, what's on your plans, the same, it's the same stuff, it's the same, uh, limits, so to speak? Or is it something additional to make it, to make it, so, let me ask this another way. You, the pre-demolition survey, does that clear, anything that comes off that site now considered acceptable to this, to be imported to this property? Or are there other things?
I, I don't know. No, I, I'd almost wanna defer to Derek, our LEP, um, but, 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 but yes, I mean, if, if, uh, you know, for example, if a high school is being demolished, you know, there are strict and stringent requirements required from a testing standpoint before the material can leave that property. And that's regulated by people beyond just local municipalities, but also the state DEP. Uh, Derek, I see you unmuted yourself. Do you wanna maybe chime in here?
Right. So that, the, to get your demolition permit, you're from, your, your local health department's gonna require all sorts of, uh, hazards, building material tests, and the state, the state health department's involved as well when it comes to, uh, things like asbestos. Um, and, and so you'd be testing for lead, asbestos, PCBs, uh, wha- whatever might else be in, in, uh, in, in the, in the, that are commonly present in building material, you know, older buildings.
Okay. So that would be, again, it, that's part of the, clears the site to be acceptable as fill, the material as fill. Nothing else has to be done after that. It's just that, like pre-demolition, it's not like they have to take samples later on to qualify it to fit, to be exported to this particular place. There's not like a, another set of qualifications anywhere down the line. Once it's cleared for demolition, that rubble is in fact considered clean fill. That, that's what I'm, I'm,
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct, Keith. And so, so it, it, it then falls into the definition of clean fill. Now, there's a couple other components that I just wanna make sure is very clear. You know, when I said QA QC before, I wanna, QA QC stands for quality assurance and quality control. So while the, while there's all the, the manifests and, uh, data that's required prior to receiving, the facility itself goes through a quality assurance and quality control so that they can verify that the information that they received on the front end, the certificates of conformity from the, from the, um, anyone bringing material to the site that says this is, that does meet the definition of clean fill, it's an additional check to verify and to provide that quality assurance, quality control. Additionally, in the material intake protocol, there's also a list that Exhibit C, which clearly documents and establishes any and all material that's automatically rejected from the facility. And that's actually taken place over the life of the, the property itself. And there's been several, um, loads that have been brought to the property that have been rejected and told to, to, to take and remove from the property. If they can't provide the certi, if they can't provide the certifications, if it, if it doesn't, if any of the material from the, the automatically rejected list is identified, that material has to go, you know, right off the property. And, and it has to meet those definitions of clean fill. It has to have that, that, that additional manifesto or analytical data before it can even be brought to the property.
All right, yep. Again, that part I totally understand. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. Um, okay.
And just one other thing to point out, too. Just one other thing to point out. There are applications approved throughout the state in this town and other towns. And a lot of projects require the import of material. I have not been a part of any project, even those with very large import requirements, that have had any of the levels identified in what we're proposing as part of this application. We recognize this is not a normal application. We recognize this is unique. And we've tried to provide additional, um, protections and parameters to be put in place so that we can protect against all of these concerns. I'm, there are several projects which have been approved for large import material projects in Monroe that have required absolutely no testing requirements, you know, no QA QC, no verification that it meets clean fill, you know, um, even the, the, the town landfill has no requirements to do any kind of testing or verification that the material is clean fill. And there are countless sites that are, you know, uh, very close to sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas that, that have these things. We've tried to build in all of these additional protection measures as part of this application from the onset. From the initial application, we included the material intake protocol. We've revised it to offer additional clarification, to be responsive to comments. Again, we're trying to find a way to bring this project and bring this property and move it forward and put whatever protection measures we can to ensure that all the concerns are, are addressed and, and accounted for. So.
Great. Um, I think the next thing we will be doing, that's true, um, we were gonna turn over to, uh, uh, Attorney Green at this point. we were going to turn over to, uh, Attorney Green at this point.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Joel Green, representing the intervenor. You know, uh, I just have a, a lot of comments that I'd like to offer, but I'd like to offer these first. First of all, there was never an objection by the applicant when you, when this commission, um, hired Southwest Conservation. The applicant has never raised any questions regarding the qualifications of Southwest Conservation. Southwest Conservation is highly regarded. Mr. Sullivan has extensive experience. He is highly regarded in this area. And he is your consultant. He is your consultant, and your consultant is telling you that you need to hire independent consultants. He is advising the commission, your consultant is telling you that you need to hire independent consultants on this project. And your regulations specifically allow it in several places. And I refer you to, uh, 7.5 K of your regulations, which says that this commission can request any other information that the commission deems necessary to the understanding of what the applicant is proposing. At the discretion of the commission, when the proposed, um, activity involves a significant activity, you can get additional information. Uh, and 7.6 details the information that you can request, including additional reports by appropriate professionals as referenced in section 19.5. 19.5 specifically speaks to professional analysis fees. So you are well within your rights to, uh, request and to hire independent consultants. Now, I dare say that I have intervened in more proceedings than anyone else involved in this application. And I can assure you that commissions, inland wetlands commission routinely, routinely hire independent consultants. It is done all the time. This is a project that, um, involves perhaps the largest excavation in the history of Monroe. And there's a lot to this. Uh, and as an intervenor and as an attorney, I had a difficult time. You know, this commission has allowed the applicant great deference. You've treated the applicant with great respect, but the applicant is, is trying to control these proceedings. They're, they're, they're hogging the ball here a little bit and really trying to run these proceedings. So it was hard for me to watch, um, Attorney Finn repeatedly trying to discredit your consultant. And I really don't see that happen. I never see that happen in hearings of this kind, and I was kind of surprised by it. Uh, and it was difficult to watch. This project, and I think to get to, uh, Commissioner Masaraco's, um, comment and question. This is a business opportunity for this applicant, and there is nothing wrong with that. But make no mistake about it, you can go on Facebook as you sit right now and look up Rockhead, and they are advertising crushed stone for sale. So as I understand it, and there is nothing wrong with it, but let's not hide the, let's not hide the true project here. The applicant wants to sell that pile of stone dust sitting there. They are trying to sell and want to sell crushed stone. And at the same time, they want to be paid to receive fill, to fill that hole. And feel free to ask them, and frankly, through you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Solley, uh, what is the applicant being paid with respect to each load that comes on the site? If you know.
I don't think, I, I, I don't think that has any bearing on the application as to whether or not this proposed activity will restore the watershed to the wetlands that have been impacted over the past 15 years.
Well, I appreciate.
There is no bearing, there is no, that is no bearing on the, the, the merits of the application. The Wetlands Commission is here to evaluate if the proposal meets the requirements of the regulations and achieves the desired goal of rehydrating the wetlands. I understand the concerns about the environmental integrity, but the business operations have nothing to do with how they evaluate and review well-in application. You, as an intervenor, are well aware of that.
So let me explain that to you, Mr. Solley, because really, you as the applicant opened the door to that when you started discussing the fact that you did not want to bear the expense of hiring consultants. And you suggested that the economics did not justify it. And I think that it's disingenuous of you to say that that's not within the purview of the commission while also arguing to the commission the economic burden of the really minor, in the grand scheme of things, economic burden of having to pay the cost of these consultants. So I really disagree with you, and I urge the commission to, uh, think about that. But the fact of the matter is, as I understand it, the applicant has and continues to want to sell earth materials from the site. And the applicant also wants to be paid to receive a million cubic yards of material. So there is, there are economics involved here, and once again, there is nothing wrong with that. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there's anything wrong with that, but that has to be borne in mind in looking at the economics of what's happening here. Now, uh, once again, this is a large project, if not the largest project in the history of the town. Towns hire independent consultants all the time. And I really generally never see applicants argue with commissions about hiring independent consultants. You don't, you really don't see it, because that is something that this commission decide. And in my experience, the applicants respect the judgment of this commission, and the commission acts independently. Now, here we have a situation where we have, and I, I know Mr. Solley was referencing other projects. We have two wetlands that have been drained. We have a site that has been drastically, drastically overmined beyond any permits that were ever permitted. Money was made here, money will be made here. And it is fair, just, and reasonable, and the people of Monroe expect this commission, as they say, turn over every stone and to make a full, fair, and informed decision on this application. That is what is fair, just, and reasonable. And in terms of the applicant suggesting that it's my client's burden, that my client should have the burden of countering their experts. If you look at the history of this, and I know you're all aware of it, we have been trying to get on that site since when. You've all seen it. And I'm sure that the applicant would not be, uh, you know, has not expressed a willingness to allow us to have, have, uh, free, uh, free rein and free access to their property. You are the inland wetlands commission. You have a strong recommendation from your consultant. And I really think that at this point, uh, it really, uh, I, I just, it's difficult for me to listen to the applicant try to counter your consultant to you. And I really think that you have a great consultant. He's made a recommendation. You should follow it. We've spent a lot of time, and I know the last meeting, there was a lot of time spent on it. And it's really pretty straightforward, if you think about it. And despite the applicant, you know, this is getting very convoluted. And I know the next thing that's going to happen is the applicant's going to want you to defer decision on this. And then we're going to run into time limits as to what can happen and what can't happen within the time limits. It is now September 23rd. We all see what the schedule is, and the time has come. And I believe that Mr. Sullivan, my notes reflect that the work can be done in four to five weeks. Well, that's going to take us into mid to late October. And, and by the time we are able to process this information. I was going to comment on the fact that, you know, the applicant dropped this information on us yesterday, but I think that's been pretty well covered by the commission. And, uh, I think you know where we, how we feel about that. And, uh, certainly we can address it. And frankly, I've been involved in meetings and a hearing last evening, and, uh, I haven't even had a chance to open the link. And I forwarded it to my clients this morning, so when I saw it. So, uh, with that, I really urge the commission to once again, listen to your consultant, to agree, frame an appropriate motion to get these consultants with the guidance of Mr. Sullivan, and to approve that motion, and let's get going, and let's find out what's in the ground. Let's find out what's in the water. And you know what? To Mr., to Commissioner Spencer's point, it's the best money you can spend. And I think, uh, if the applicants, uh, and the applicant, if your consultant agrees with the applicants, then this commission can move forward with great confidence and know that you did everything you were supposed to do as a commission to investigate this and the compliance with your regulations. Uh, I don't know if any of our consultants want to weigh in on this. And, uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Glass, you have a comment, or Mr. Bjorkland, or, uh, George Logan at this point. But, uh, that's all I have for the moment.
Uh, Attorney Green, I just want to, uh, to, 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 to comment on what you had to say and to mention again what was mentioned, I think, first, you know, the last meeting and the meeting before. There's nobody on this commission who's qualified to make an assessment of any of the documentation that is coming to us. So, so we're not, we're volunteers. We're not paid professionals. Even if we, even if one of us was, it would be a long stretch for the rest of the commissioners to, uh, ask that person to take on that task and then, you know, be our, our, you know, our consultant. So I don't see who, who, who looks at this, who, who's going to interpret it? I don't see that we have anybody, because I believe, um, Mr. Sullivan said that he's not qualified to interpret it for us as well. So it does leave, I think, in, 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 in what we need to do to, to properly process it. So that's up to the commission to decide.
100%. And that's what your regulations specifically contemplated. It specifically says, if you require additional information, and in the law, we have experts to understand facts that are beyond the understanding of, of, um, laypeople. Now, you spend a lot of time as a commission looking at your regulations, and you've looked at a lot of projects. But I think, as Mr. Sullivan said, and he's got great experience, and even he is saying, with over 20 years of experience in this field, uh, even he is saying that you need someone to interpret this data and, uh, and to, um, offer an opinion to you on what is appropriate with, uh, whatever is determined. And also, I think that the people of Monroe, and certainly my clients, would hope that you would get an independent set of eyes on this. And I think that the applicant should welcome it. And if they are as confident as they say in their consultants, um, and, uh, you know, in a perfect world, your consultant blesses their work, I suppose. And then you can go forward, uh, you know, within the, within your regulations with approving this project with great confidence, as opposed to having the applicant kind of dictate the way this goes. Follow your consultant.
Uh, Mr. Ramon, I just want to reply briefly to Mr. Green. I mean, I want to put this in context. I, I will be brief. We got a report from the Southwest Conservation District that contained 32 pages and had specific recommendations. We took that to heart, and we did everything in our power to respond to everything that was listed in that report. We did independent, uh, soil testing. We got manifests showing the material that had been brought to the property. This is overlaid by the fact that the water testing has shown no environmental contaminants. It's also been shown that the, uh, that the material that's been brought to the property had no environmental contaminants. We put in place at the recommendation of the Southwest Conservation District a strict protocol that Kevin, uh, just described about what material would be brought to the property in connection with the project. And so we're at a loss to understand where the risk is with regard to this project. But having said that, having said that, we don't want to have a moving target. We went ahead and we hired our own independent hydrogeologist based on Mr. Sullivan's recommendation that we do so. And then without looking at another whit of information, nothing new, Mr. Sullivan then renders an additional addendum to his report orally at this hearing. I don't think that's fair. Look, we don't, we don't disagree that this commission has the authority to hire independent experts. We just want to be treated fairly and equitably. We don't want a moving target. And that's what we, we've experienced. We have a moving target. We got this report. We did everything that we were supposed to, and now we're being asked to do something else. I think the handwriting's on the wall with regard to what the commission wants to do. I know the commission is loathe to be involved in a project that may have a 1% risk of having a problem with it. I understand that you, you're worried about that. We're trying to assure you there is no risk and that we have protocols put in place. But this idea that we're trying to hide the ball or be unfair or against this thing is not in context. And I, I wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you, Mr. Ramon.
Just if I may.
Attorney Green, I just want to say something in, in a slight defense, uh, of my commission to Attorney Finn. You know, we are undertaking, uh, a huge responsibility for the town, for volunteers. You know, this is huge. It's way above our heads. We are, we are, we are putting forth our best effort to do the best job for our fellow citizens, you know? And it's not going to be easy. It's not easy for any of us. So, you know, they have a choice that they can make, to feel comfortable with the decisions that they're going to hand down. And I understand there may be some redundancy. I understand it. You know, it, it may not feel, you know, you know, it may not feel the greatest thing for your client. But we're asking these laypeople who are being surrounded by professionals, you know, to, to, to step up and, and live in your world and try to understand, none of us basically have been formally trained for. And it's a huge, huge mental task for us. So, you know, I want to make sure that my commissioners are, are comfortable when they're being asked to, to take on this. But I just want to just, I'm, I'm here to defend them because, you know, I think it, it just boils down to is that there's, there's disagreement as to how much information, um, these commissioners should be allowed to have. So that's, that's all I'm.
I understand, and, and I don't, I, look, I, I fully understand and I empathize and sympathize that, that you're volunteers and that you're laypeople. My, my, the last point I made was the fact that we, we did try to do everything we were asked to do in that Southwest Conservation District report. And we, we did, we were, we're working towards providing all that information. And, and now we're greeted tonight with, uh, Mr. Sullivan sort of adding something that should have been part of the original report, I think. Look, we're going to, you're going to do what you think is best, and we respect you for that. And, uh, but I just don't, I didn't like the fact that it looks like we were trying to hide the ball when we've really been trying to comply with every single request that has, that has been made of us by the commission. I agree with respect to the intervenor, we've been a little reticent because of the history of the intervenor making, uh, inappropriate and incorrect claims about the property that will be false. So, uh, we, we granted the site visit, we did the testing, we provided all this information. So I just didn't want my client to be put in a, in a bad light when they're, they really, they really shouldn't be. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
We had, let me just get a response from Attorney Green, and then we'll go to Evan, who's been patient. And then we'll let Kevin wrap up. I think, Evan, you were, you were trying to comment on that?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman.
I'm joining the show.
All right, Attorney Green, you have the floor.
Yeah, just briefly, I, I don't think that there's any, first of all, there's nothing in your regulations that says that if your consultant writes a report initially, uh, that they are bound by that and they can't make additional and further recommendations. Clearly, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, he has, uh, watched the hearings, he has seen the proceedings, he's gotten the new information, and based on what he's seeing, um, he's made this recommendation. Um, I note that Mr. Glass, um, our consultant, was raising his hand. I would like to defer to him, um, for just a moment, um, if I may.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Evan Glass. I am both a hydrogeologist and a licensed environmental professional in Connecticut with Old Environmental Corporation in Colchester, Connecticut on behalf of the intervenor, uh, Mr. Metropolis. And I concur with what Attorney Green said regarding the, um, the commission's, um, need for a, an independent. a, an independent consultant to, to help with this very technical, very large and very long uh uh project that'll take a long time to complete. It'll have repercussions, you know, good, I hope, uh long into the future. Um, a firm that uh the commi, the commission would likely hire a firm, maybe one of the ones recommended by Mr. Sullivan, and that firm is very likely to have not only um a licensed environmental professional, but also a hydrogeologist and, and, and very likely those could be different people. In my firm, we happen to have two licensed environmental professionals that are both hydrogeologists. Um, but um certainly WSP has um, has LEPs and hydrogeologists and they're a large firm. Mine is a small firm and many firms in the middle are going to have all the skills that the commission is going to need. Um, a number of times uh it's been mentioned that uh, that allegations have been made uh about this property, and I would say that's not exactly true. And with respect to my report in particular, I would say rather I made well-qualified statements that pointed out a lack of information in the initial application. And the response to our, our um, our report and to Mr. Sullivan's report, information has been forthcoming and we're very appreciative of that. And in response to Mr. through, through um the, the chairman, uh Mr. Finn's uh indication of a moving target, I think is also um a man, is also due to the lack of information that was available in the initial application. Um, for example, I'm not, I don't believe I saw a reference to the two hundred and fifty, one sample per two hundred and fifty cubic yards in the initial application. I only saw a reference to one sample for three thousand. If I missed the reference to one for two fifty, uh please let me know. Um, thank you. Those are my comments for now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glass. All right. I think um, is there anybody else that has any other comments to make um tonight uh about anything that we've discussed so far? I think we have to wrap this up with, with a decision uh or at least some discussion amongst, amongst, amongst us uh commissioners as to how we want to move forward with the recommendation.
Keith?
And who is that who tried to chime in?
Denise.
Oh, hi.
Um, just, just, you know, with everything going on, I just want to add my two cents a little bit. You know, being an engineer, I've been on both sides. I've worked for the town and I've worked presenting to the town. And every town is different, but I've been on the sides where there has had to be independent um, independent reviews. And I never took it personally when someone reviewed my work because it always makes a better project.
So uh, I guess at this point, we have uh till the end of the year to make it, to close, close the hearing, correct? Close.
Yeah, correct.
Close the public hearing. So in order to do that, if we're going to hire or if the commission requests hiring an, an independent consultant um in order to move this to closure. Barbara, if you want to chime in?
Yes, I think if, if that's the direction of the commission.
Barbara, just because I.
I can't hear you.
So if you introduce yourself.
We can't hear you, Keith.
Oh, I can't hear me? You hear me now?
Yeah.
You can hear. Okay. Apologize, Barbara, I forgot to mention your presence in the opening of the meeting. So for the record, if you could just introduce yourself to the record.
Yeah, Bar, Barbara Schellenberg, uh Special Counsel. Uh, what I think you need to do, if the commission wants to move in this direct, direction, at least to have discussion of the matter, I think you, somebody needs to make a motion like the motion that was made at the last meeting. Because you have to comply with section eight dash ten of your regulations. Um, so you want, you would want to uh, you know, make the, make the same kind of motion. In other words, and I, I, I think everybody has a, a copy of that draft motion, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so you want to uh make a motion pursuant to section eight dash ten that authorize, authorizes the inland wetlands agent to solicit preliminary estimates of costs and scheduling from in, in independent hydro, independent hydrogeologist consultants to perform whatever work the commission decides. Uh, they would be seeking that expert to perform. So again, it should be along the lines of the last draft motion with whatever tweaks you feel are important to make. Someone should make the motion, someone should second it, there should be discussion and it should be voted on.
Great, thank you, Barbara. Um, have all the commissioners read this? Uh, Lois, go ahead.
I had a question for Barbara. Do, do we have to be specific in the motion as to exactly what it is that we want the consultant to review? Or can we use the wording that you just used, which was to um perform whatever services the commission may need help with? Can we put that in the motion?
I, I think, I think you can be general. The, the main point to comply with section eight dash ten of the regulation is you do need to solicit the preliminary estimates of costs.
Right.
Um, that, that, that's the key. The rest of it, I think, can fashion however you deem appropriate.
All right, so if we were to do this, um, I'm just looking for the correct verbiage to, to, verbiage, whatever the word is, to, to say that, to um, if we use the, the wording that was given to us in the draft, but without the bullet points. What?
Well, I mean, the other thing you, you could do is you, you could ask Chris Sullivan to, uh, you know, repeat. I, I mean, I think he talked about analyzing data. Um, you know, he may be able to help in that regard more than I can in terms of the things, the types of uh tasks you would be looking for this consultant to perform.
Chris, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I can, Chris Stone, Southwest Conservation District. Um, I mean, some of the things that I mentioned at the very beginning with reviewing documents, um, data collection plans and sampling plans, um, sampling locations and then the resulting data sets and interpretations of data. Um, I probably said it too fast for Lois, again, judging by her laughing.
Yeah, I've got analyze all data, dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, analyze, analyze data, uh, review sampling locations and collection plans.
Review sampling locations. Sorry, I write slowly.
No worries. Uh, any of the resulting data sets and interpretations.
And I'm still on back on the sampling locations and data collection points?
Yeah, uh, data collection locations.
Locations, okay.
And then the resulting data sets.
Resulting data sets, okay.
And then, and interpretations.
And interpretation. And I would like to add one to the end and any other um, how do I say, any other situation that may come up that we aren't aware of yet?
Any other services as deemed necessary by the commission?
Ooh, I like that. Anything necessary, okay. Okay, then I have a, then I have a motion to make. Okay. Pursuant to section eight dash ten of the Monroe Inland Wetlands Watercourses Regulation and as recommended by the Southwest Conservation District Report dated August twenty twenty, the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission hereby authorizes the inland wetlands agent to solicit preliminary estimates of costs and scheduling from independent hydrogeologist consultants to perform the following work in association with IWC Application Number Twenty Twenty Dash O Three R. Uh, to analyze, number one, to analyze all data provided by the applicant pertaining to previously performed soil samples and groundwater, groundwater conditions of the subject property. Um, to review documentation, um, review them, three, review the sampling locations and data location, data collection locations, I'm sorry, it's getting lame. Um, number four, five, resulting data sets and interpretations and any other services as deemed necessary by the commission.
A motion from Commissioner Spence of what she just said, and do they want to second that?
Second.
Second, uh, I'm going to say I saw Commissioner Hall's hand first. Second by Commissioner Hall. Uh, all in favor?
Uh, I.
All right.
That's unanimous. Um, I would like to ask though Chris Sullivan a question and to clarify something. Um, does it ever happen that when this step is taken by a commission that the physical, that the physical data presented ends up being sufficient for this third-party consultant and it's just a data analysis task?
Uh, I mean, that's a pretty big hypothetical, I guess. I mean. If any, it, it could be um that the data that's presented um could be sufficient, but I, I mean, it depends on the site and what's needed at the site. I'm sorry, my brain is fading now too.
Yeah, no, it's a long, it's a long meeting and I'm hoping to wrap it up. Uh, I appreciate your time. Um, just, just trying to see if because of, because we are trying to accomplish this for the applicant um on time, just wondering if there's ever been a situation or if it's, if it could be, but you know, thinking, thinking uh positively, you know, pessimistically, um, that possibly they could uh assess the data, the collection processes, uh, affirm the integrity of, of the consultants already hired by the applicant and, and say, yeah, we're just going to this for you, uh, make sure you guys are all comfortable with the data. And this may not, is drawn out. I know it's, you know, I know you can't, I'm just asking if it's a possibility or if usually it's like a start over type of, let, they go through their entire protocol. Um, that's all, just trying to get a feel.
I mean, I think it's possible and I think uh where that would become more possible is with more input and responsiveness with any sort of sampling plans and sampling locations um being conferred with uh any third party first so that uh it's more apparent that anything that would want to be captured is captured upfront. And then there isn't a need to go back and try to get something else after, after the fact.
Okay.
Hope that answers your question.
My last, my other question before we close, uh, staff, when, when this, when this list comes back, do we have to wait until the next meeting to uh take action on it? Because that's another, you know, two weeks, that's a lot, that's a lot of days clicked off the calendar.
You, you could spec, you could schedule a special meeting, just a short special meeting for the purpose of choosing one of these consultants and, and deciding whether you're going to go ahead. That might be a good idea under the circumstances.
Does that sound?
You don't want to wait another two weeks. You know, again, I don't, it, it may take a little while to go through, obviously, uh depending what Denise comes up with. Um, but again, if you have a concern about waiting two more weeks, you, you could do that.
Well, I think it would be, you know, if you, it sounds like it'd be in the best interest of the applicant if, if we could do that for them. Is that, uh, do you guys want to chime in on that?
I mean, uh, uh, make sure I'm not muted. Yeah, so uh, uh, again, we're, we're trying to be responsive to, to to the Southwest Conservation District comments. We've been able to do quite a bit of information and analysis and reporting and analytics. We just submitted that yesterday. Our hydrogeologist has prepared a comprehen, has prepared a comprehensive scope that he feel and he feels is adequate to fully assess the hydrogeology characteristics of this property and includes sufficient sampling and well installations and physometer installations to give us all of the information necessary to evaluate the site. We have no concern that an additional third-party reviewer will do anything but verify and reinforce our conclusions and our approach. So we're, we're, as the applicant team, we are moving forward, we are, we are continuing with our testing protocol. We intend to have our report finished for that second meeting, for the meeting in October on the fourteenth. That was our goal, that was our target. We're going to continue to move on in that fashion. And we're confident that even if a third party's engaged, and I want to just say for the record, we never questioned the commission's ability to engage a third party and we never discouraged the commission from engaging a third party. And we welcomed Chris Sullivan's review. We, we appreciated that and we've incorporated a number of those comments into our revised plan. So all that being said, we're going to continue to move forward, we're going to do our work and we're, we're, we're happy to review any comments that come out of the third-party reviewers of our information, of our, of our materials. We don't, we, we do not want to or we don't intend to delay until a consultant is brought on board to then dictate what our scope's going to be. Our scope is being prepared to be comprehensive to answer all the questions that needed to be answered for this application.
And it sounds, that would be, I think that would be excellent, that all comes together and all falls into place. Um, but my question was, um, you know, I could, I could I could ask the commissioners to, to, to put together a, a special meeting, you know, take another evening and set up another meeting to help get this accomplished, if it's going to be, you know, faster than waiting for the next meeting. But if you're, if, if, if it's your opinion that we'll wait for the next meeting, we're not going to, you know, we don't want to be to, to, to serve the applicant uh with an extra step to help move this thing along, underline. From, you know, for response on that.
I mean, w, w, we're, we're going to keep moving forward based on everything that we've done. We've, you know, as a courtesy, we provided our scope to Chris. We understand he's not the expert to opine on it. But again, we're confident that what our scope is, is sufficient. So we, we plan on continuing to move forward. Um, and we, you know, welcome anything that, that the commission gets back from any other party.
So can I ask a question, Keith?
Yeah.
Um, so Kevin, are you saying that the information that the third party would review, would that be ready at the next meeting?
We're, we're working towards having, we're, we're working to trying to have our report from a hydrogeologist prepared for October fourteenth.
October fourteenth, okay. Um.
Mr. Uh Chairman Ramon, here, here's my suggestion.
Uh, Attorney Finn, I think I was.
I'm sorry.
Um, Barbara, I would just want to know for the special meeting, does it need to be, how far in advance? Does it need to be noted? Excuse me?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four, okay.
Yeah.
Similar to the sidewalk, correct, Barbara?
Correct.
Okay.
We all talked about how that would be. Meeting, sa, same thing.
Uh, here's, I, here's my suggestion. I, I think, uh, I think the suggestion is worth, is worth considering. And if it's not uh procedurally uh inappropriate, and I don't think it is, I would, I would go ahead and schedule the special uh meeting and if for some reason uh we don't need it, then uh, then we, it could be canceled. But I, I am worried about the time and I do think, uh, I do appreciate the offer, Chairman Ramon, and I, I, I think it's, it's, it's worth scheduling a special meeting.
All right, thank you. Uh, of course, you can't do that until we get um the responses back, the solicit, solicitations. So we would have to wait until we had a. So, we would have to wait until we had a sufficient number of responses, or after we get the list, then we could pick a date, 24-hour notice, and go from there. And like Attorney Finn said, if, you know, we determine this is something we're going to go forward with, it's great. We had done, you know, sooner than later, stay on the timeline. Commissioner Spence, did you have something?
No, that was basically it. I didn't hear that we were going to give enough time to Denise to get this information together before we voted on it. So, I wanted to make sure that that was all clear. But that's, and a special meeting sounds fine to me. It's easy enough to do on Zoom. It's great.
All right. Well, we could also, we could, I mean, the next, the next meeting is what?
Is October 14th.
That's what, two or three weeks? Three weeks.
Like two and a half, yeah.
So, we'd want to do it probably next week or the week after, obviously. We don't want to do it, you know, a couple of days before.
If it were to take place, it would probably be during the week of the 5th through the 6th, or fix, the 5th through the 9th of October.
Okay.
But is Denise having the time to get that information together by then? I mean, people take time to submit estimates and quotes and that kind of thing. It doesn't happen instantaneously.
I also think, and I'll let Lois just to discuss with you, and Chris or even Kevin may be able to respond. I think these people that are going to be on the list are probably doing this all day long. So, they probably have seen this so many times before that their proposal shouldn't, I don't think, won't take that long, unless there's something that I'm missing on that. You know, they're going to, they're going to, you know, they have us, you know. So, maybe it won't take so long, but what is your thoughts on that, Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan, how long you think we would wait for responses with proposals?
I believe it could be fairly quick. I mean, I know that there's a list of firms already in Denise's hand. I don't know if any communication has started with those organizations, but I think you're right that, you know, putting something together wouldn't be a long turnaround time. So, I think it could be done pretty quickly.
All right. Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss before we close this meeting for the evening?
I do need to read the exhibits, Keith, when you want me to.
Okay, Don, you can do that now.
Okay. There's a few. So, we left off with exhibit number 17 from the last meeting. So, I'm going to start with exhibit number 18, which is Plan Revision and Response to Comments by Kevin Soli, Soli Engineering. The document was dated September 22nd. Exhibit 19 was Rockhead Material Acceptance Procedure Report. That was dated August 20th. These are all, these were all received September 22nd. Exhibit 20 is the Wetland and Vernal Pool Assessment Report by William Kenny Associates LLC. The document was dated May 26, 20. The revision date is September 9, 2020. Exhibit 21 is the Inland Wetlands Bond Estimate Form. Exhibit 22 is a 44 sheet plan set titled Proposed Site Development and Restoration by Soli Engineering LLC. The document was dated May 26, 2020, with revision date of September 18, 2020. Exhibit 23 is an engineering report by Soli Engineering LLC. The document was dated May 26, 2020, revision date September 18, 2020. Exhibit 24 is the Historic Operations Report by Soli Engineering. Document was dated September 22, 2020. Exhibit 25 is the Materials Manifest, and that was not dated. And then Exhibit 26 is Conservation Commission Comments. And the document was dated 9/22/2020, although I received that today. And I forgot, that's the one thing that I do need to read into the record, is that letter, which I'll do right now. This is from the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission. It's a memo that states that it's to the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission, from the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission. Reason: Application 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence, dated September 22, 2020. At our special meeting on September 22, 2020, the Conservation Commission unanimously approved two motions related to the application for 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive to approve the report done by the Southwest Conservation District dated August 2020, review of inland wetlands application 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. And number two, because the property in question contains the headwaters of the Paclonic River, wetland areas have been destroyed, and a large portion of the open space has been significantly destroyed because the project is complex and has a 10-year duration schedule. And in order to proceed in the best interest of the town and its residents, the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission urges the inland wetland commission to engage in its own independent specialists to review information presented by all parties, advise on other data needed for thorough review of the application, and advise on a course of action. The August 2020 report from Southwest Conservation District was extremely helpful, but as the inland wetlands commission continues to review the application, we believe additional expertise is necessary. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns. Please let us know if you have any questions. Karen Bernoski, Chair. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if all the business for the evening is now done?
Wait, Keith. Wait a minute. You got public comment. You have to open it for public comment.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah.
So, does anybody in the public have anything to say in favor of this application? Anybody in the public anything to say in opposition to this application? Is anybody in the public that would like to say or make a comment of a general nature about this application? I don't see anyone. Okay, someone like to make a motion? Make a motion, then we close the meeting? Motion from Commissioner Gingrich, right? That was...
Yes.
And then a second by?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Stewart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned at 10:41 PM. Thank you, everybody. See you next time.